Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Zoning Board of Appeals for the town of Wareham. For tonight's agenda, June 14, 2017, it is 6:30 PM. Actually, sorry, 6:35 PM. And we are at room 320 from the multi-service center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. I'll make a roll call. My far right, Wilma Engelman; our town planner, Ken Buckland; our clerk, Jim Acubachi; my far left, associate member Jake Morrison; regular member attorney Jen Kendrick; and Carl Baptiste Senior, myself; and as the chair. We have some preliminary business to do, so just give us a minute. Minutes.
I have reviewed the minutes. I find them acceptable as presented, and therefore move to accept as presented.
All right.
Second.
Second by Wilma. All in favor for minutes say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain, 5-0-0. Lanny, you have a waiver? You wanna go for it?
Good evening. I'm here preliminarily for a request for a waiver of a plan in order to file an application on behalf of Osama Mohammed at 307 Main Street, Wareham, Mass. I filed an application on Monday evening and got a call that it wasn't accepted because of the lack of a site plan. And to the extent that a plan is required, I'm asking the board to waive that requirement until the hearing itself, reserving, of course, the right to request any type of plan that you think is appropriate at that time. The application deals with the use of the Getty gas station. It doesn't require any construction whatsoever. There's no changes taking place. So, on one hand, the site plan by zoning bylaws is not required for this site or for the application. And to the extent that your board has in their application package a requirement of a plan, it does in most sections state as it pertains to this particular project. So, I think you're going to find when the presentation is made that a plan is not gonna be necessary, again, because it deals strictly with use. But for tonight's purposes, we're just looking for you to waive it so that the application can get filed, Ken can process it, and a date can be set for the hearing.
Okay.
You're asking for us to waive, but we still reserve the right to request.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just looking to file it, that's all. It needs to get filed within 30 days of the denial by the building inspector or commissioner and...
All right. For the one who's not familiar with this case, this is the Getty gas station. The bylaw says if you abandon more than two years, you lose your right. Attorney Bello representing Osama to reinstate the license. Now, I shouldn't say reinstate the license, to get the variance to have a gas station. The granting authority would be the selectmen, but like he explained, it's strictly, it doesn't need a plan. It's just strictly a use. And we'll hear the case when it comes in. So, what's the wishes?
Unless anybody else objects, I move that we grant the waiver and, as we previously said, reserve the right to request one at the time.
Very good, very well. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain, 5-0-0. Thank you.
So, Ken, will that be accepted tomorrow for filing?
Is there something there? Am I not seeing it?
It's not, but I could do any new business. Modification request to petition 30-16, Thomas Foren, 19 Riverside Drive.
And that was, what, Osama Hossad or something like that? I'll just put the...
Osama Joe's Gas.
Joe's Gas.
Osama Joe's Gas.
No, it wasn't Joe's Gas, it was Getty.
Getty. Yeah, but he's the Joe's Gas guy.
Joe's Gas is...
That was gonna...
Same owner. He's the same guy. Yeah, he always had it, but finally...
If you don't catch him on the first one, you're... What are we on? I'm sorry, what number?
13.
Would the discussion be okay? Do we need the folder, or is everything we need gonna be right here? Let me get the folder out. We'll just look at... We'll have it.
All right. You want to state your name, address for record, and what's up?
Bill Lockwood, Lockwood Architects, representing Mr. Foren. Lockwood Architects, 219 Ozet Avenue.
Okay, what's the modification?
The papers I just passed out, you got the copy of the decision which was issued last year.
Right.
Following that, you have a copy of the marked-up plan which you approved at that point in time. As part of the discussion, if you'll recall, we had cut back the size of the deck to seven and a half feet.
Right.
And the owners liked to run that across the entire front of the building instead of stopping it short as it was shown at that point in time. They thought they might be able to do that. The building commissioners sent them back. So, we're here to ask if we can modify this plan by... to what appears on the following sheet, which is seven and a half feet plus a walkway down the side connecting up with the existing steps. Following the last two sheets are before and current pictures of the street side and then kind of from the southeast corner, which shows where the steps, the current steps are and where you'd like to connect the existing deck. Connect the proposed deck, rather.
All right.
So, that's what we're about.
Stonewall looks great, but let's ask, see everyone's opinion, what do they think, if it's a minor or major? Wilma.
Well, I really think that it's a major change.
She thinks it's a major. Jim?
I'm still looking at it. I'm undecided.
I honestly couldn't quite hear everything that you said. I apologize. I'm straining here, maybe the hair condition.
Okay. I'm not sure if this is working, anyway.
This was submitted, but this is not it.
Okay. Basically, the plan, the first plan that you've come across is what was approved last year.
Yep.
The next plan is what we'd like to do in lieu of that plan. You'll notice that it takes off the two additions in the back, increases the deck area...
By how much?
It increases the deck area from, I believe, we had it as 227 to 323, but it reduces the overall percentage of lot coverage by about 2%.
Okay.
If I may?
Jake, you have anything?
No questions. I have nothing.
No, go ahead.
All right, I got... Before you appeared tonight, we got a correspondence that showed a couple plans, and there was a modification, but that's not what you're presenting to us now, if you don't mind. I wanna throw this away if it's irrelevant.
Okay. Now, this was not the...
This is exactly, this is the approved one.
This is the approved one.
And then this was attached.
Yeah.
And that's not what you're doing.
No.
That's what you're doing.
That was a thought, but it's...
A year ago, we presented...
Okay. So, I can throw this away?
...the alternative plans that we picked.
So, this is what I'm looking at tonight?
That's what we're looking at.
Aye, Charlie.
So, now, my question, now that I'm making sure I'm addressing the right change, my question is, if we make this a minor, we haven't given your abutto to the West the opportunity to know we've made this change?
I guess you mean the South, probably, but... South being to the left.
If I stand on the street, the abutto to the left.
Yeah, that'd be the South, yeah.
Okay.
The abutto on the left is here? Apparently not.
So, I'm gonna express my concern that because it's only gonna be three feet from the property line, I'd want that, at least that abutto to have had the opportunity to be notified. If you came before us tonight with an affidavit from him, I might lean towards minor, but I personally, not speaking for the board, but I personally, not having given that person the opportunity to speak, would therefore vote for a major modification and ask for it to be re-advertized.
All right. Just let the record show, Charlie Raul, town engineer, just came in. It is 6:45. Thank you. All right, Jen, you wanna...
I'm inclined to agree with Jim.
Agree with Jen? Okay, Carl.
I feel the same.
He feels the same. Okay. Let's hear a motion.
I guess I move that we consider this a major modification and require the applicant to re-advertize for this change. That would be in a form of a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Carl. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, 5-0-0. So, we need a major. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in.
What else would you do?
This is... Which one was this? This was... This right here, okay.
Oak Hill Road. All right, let's... We have to come up with decision for petition 22-17, John Spinell, for 9 Oak Hill Road. Let me see who was here and who wasn't. One second.
Oak Hill Road. Might have that here.
All right.
I believe we wanted to give Jen the opportunity to review this.
May 24, there was Carl, myself, Jim, and Wilma. Jen sat originally on that case before, but did you read the minutes? You comfortable making a decision?
I did review the video.
Okay. Carl, did you leave early last time on that?
No, time before, I believe.
For Oak, Oak Hill.
Okay. That's this one.
So, we could make a decision now? So, what's your wishes, everyone? I gotta get familiar back with it.
I'm prepared to make a motion to grant unless anybody has any objection on the board.
All right. Any discussion on that?
Is that the one that can't go over 27, 28?
That's the one. That was the one that was the concern, that they were gonna...
Okay.
Most of the concerns went away.
I just wanted to be sure.
I think we have happy neighbors or at least capitulation on the part of the neighbors, and I personally don't feel as though we have any basis to deny. I don't even think he needed to come in front of this board, but that's my interpretation. So, all that said, I make a motion to grant.
All right.
Second it.
With conditions, of course.
Go ahead.
Okay, so we have a...
With conditions.
So, we have a motion to grant by Jim, second by Wilma. Okay, with conditions.
And what we're granting is a special permit.
Right. What's the conditions?
Standard.
All right, and not, I'll add, not to exceed 28 feet in height, on average height.
You want it not to exceed, or you want it per plan as presented?
Per plan, but not to exceed 28 feet high.
Okay.
So, not to exceed 28 feet to the peak in average height because it's slow. All right, so, okay, let me rephrase. The front of the house not to exceed 28 feet, the front of the house. The shed to be removed. And deciding either to be hardy plank or cedar, cedar shingles, or hardy plank.
Hardy.
Hardy, like the Sempley.
Hardy.
Hardy. H-A-R-D-Y, hardy plank or cedar shingles. This way it goes with the neighbors. Or cedar impression, vinyl cedar impression. Okay. And site plan to be... Site plan, according to site plan drafted by J.C. Engineering and dated 3, March 2, 2017. It was right. It was the latest plan, right? That's the latest plan, right?
And per plan.
So, it was revised, revised March 2.
And we've got this plan on 315 to 16.
The architectural plan?
Yep.
Charlie's place.
So, per plan for the architect...
Architect by SVP.
Per architectural plan drafted by SPB, and the date is... I can't read this. What is that?
316-16.
Free, March 16, 2016. All right, any other conditions, Jen?
No.
Jake? Carl? Wilma, you want anything else?
No, nothing else.
Okay. Ken, any suggestion?
Just to make findings.
She was signed.
Yeah, we have to do findings. Jen, that's section 13-35.
So, my issue is that there was discussion back and forth, there was, from the get-go, disagreement over whether or not, in this situation, where the only nonconformity was a lot, but the structure being torn down was being doubled in size, whether or not that would be deemed an increase in the nonconforming nature of the structure under 48 Section 6. And upon reviewing the case law that the abutto presented to us, the Bjorkland case, he's right, in my opinion, that the SJC has held, that even where there are no... even where, in a situation like this, the only nonconformity is the lot, the size of the lot, where the structure being torn down is doubled in size, that indeed increases the nonconforming nature of the structure. So, I'm not prepared to make findings at this time that it doesn't.
All right, so I guess make a vote. So, we get the... We have a motion to grant by Jim, we have a second by Wilma. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain, 4-1-0. It carries. Thank you. Very well.
And before we go on to the next one, let's get signatures.
Okay. Findings. We can do the findings. Okay.
Okay? Hang on. Only one person can be signing at a time, I'm sorry. There you go.
Make findings.
Right. Just gotta do the findings.
Okay. Do we need to do those right now, or you want...
Yeah, no, no. Well, I find it not, like as you wrote, it not substantially detrimental to the neighbor and does not...
It's not an increase on the nonconformity?
Right. So...
I'm gonna write that?
Sure. Anything else should add? No? Carl? Ken, should you add something else you wanna add on findings?
That the alteration and extension will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
That's right.
Wilma, you want some findings?
Aye. I just thought it should be right in the same footprint, but I guess it's gotta be moved back, is it?
No, it's going on the same footprint.
Footprint.
Yep. They went back and forth on that. The house never moved.
As presented, it's on the footprint.
As presented, yeah, as presented, yeah.
Okay.
There you go. Did Jen get a chance to sign?
She's got to it.
That's a waiver?
No, that's a decision. Just sign and put denied next to your name.
Sign opposed.
And just put denied.
The opposition party on the other end of the table.
All right.
Wilma.
All right, what's next? All right, we go to the public hearings. 23-17, Lisa Williams Cudero, 28, Old Grand Charlie Road. Go ahead.
Good evening again. I represent Lisa Williams Cudero, who's sitting next to me. I'll have a package, I've submitted a package to you. Contains all of the information on the application, including the building inspector's denial letter, and a map showing the existing house, the existing, the footprint of what was the initial house, and what the proposed house is. So, with your permission, I'm gonna read the letter of intent into the record. You can follow along with me. You each have it. It's number eight on the package. The lot in question contains 10,395 square feet. And tonight, we're asking this board to address only the zoning issues. We understand there are additional conservation issues, and the petitioner will take those up with the Conservation Commission at the appropriate time. As can be seen from the building commissioner's denial record, the town records and engineers' plans show that a house had been moved onto this particular lot in or about 1970. And about five or six years later, those records indicate that that house had burned down. The zoning in this particular district changed during that time period between the house being moved and the house burning down. It originally required 10,000 square feet. It then changed in 1971 in June to 30,000 square feet, and then again in May of 1973 to an R130 district. This lot obviously became a nonconforming building or structure at the time of the first zoning change. Now, section 1322 of our zoning bylaw provides, and I'm quoting, "A nonconforming building or structure which has been damaged or destroyed may be repaired or rebuilt, provided that such restoration shall not exceed the original area and height and shall be placed no nearer the street line than the building or structure which the restoration replaces, and that there is no material change in exterior appearance, except according to the terms of a special permit issued by the Board of Appeals." So, our zoning bylaw calls for a special permit in order to restore this property.
Which...
Section 1322.
Thank you.
Now, our bylaw clearly treats a lawfully existing structure which has been damaged or destroyed differently in that it specifically provides that it may be rebuilt as a matter of right, if not higher in height nor larger in area, and no nearer the street line, and has the same general exterior. And if not, then a special permit is required. Section 1322 says nothing about a time restriction, nor does it call for variance. The building commissioner takes the position that unless the proposed dwelling is in the footprint of the original dwelling, that a variance is required. Based on this section of our bylaw, I respectfully disagree with that conclusion. As a practical matter, what is being proposed by the petitioner is far more desirable to the neighborhood and more in line with the intent of the zoning bylaw than simply keeping the previous footprint, which according to the engineer's plan had the original house encroaching onto Glen Charlie Road with a zero-foot front yard setback. The engineer's plan for the replacement house at least sets the house back 10 feet rather than 0 feet. And while closer to the right sideline, the neighboring property on the right-hand side is a state-owned unbuildable parcel which serves only as a buffer between the state highway in this residential neighborhood. Clearly, no harm is being created to the state highway by the property being closer to the lot line. If there were anything to be accomplished by moving the proposed garage to the other side of the home, the petitioner is more than willing to do so. For all of the reasons set forth herein, the requirements of a special permit are easily met. Even if we were to just disregard section 1322 as if it did not exist and agree with the building commissioner that a variance is required, this property would actually meet the statutory requirements for the statutes. The shape and topography of the parcel create the hardship which causes the unorthodox placement of the structure on the lot. You have wetlands forcing the structure to be placed as close to the front lot line as possible. The hardship, if the current zoning requirements are literally enforced, would result in what was designed and created as a buildable house lot now becoming an underbuildable parcel of land, having little, if any, value to anyone, and risking the creation of an attractive nuisance. This is a residential neighborhood with similar, if not smaller, sized lots along Glen Charlie Road with like-sized residences thereon. The building commissioner's denial letter, which is attached, tells you that if the owner of the property wanted to, he or she could have built a home on the property as a matter of right any time within five years of the 1973 zoning change. And according to the last bullet in his letter, could even now put a house on the property if it was in the same footprint as the original home. And I must pose to you, what would the town and neighborhood be better served by? Having the house reconstructed in the same location as the original structure which encroaches onto the road, or having it located where the petitioner is now requesting, backing it off of that by 10 feet? or having it located where the petitioner is now requesting, backing it off of that by ten feet?
All right, uh... So he could do a, that she could do a house like it used to be?
She could have put that, according to the building commissioner, she could have rebuilt on the existing footprint.
Okay.
The foundation is still there.
Right.
So they're able to locate that, but it actually goes into the, into the road.
All right.
I got pictures of it here if you want.
So I see it. So they only make, she wants to make it look better, apparently, set it back.
She's gonna make it more conforming rather than less, except on the right side. And she can switch the whole thing around to the left side, but the reality is, on the right side is just state-owned property that, that's the buffer between the highway. There's, there's nobody there to encroach upon, and nothing that could then be built on that. So the engineers felt it more appropriate to put it on that side.
All right, uh... My, my suggestion and my request, we're gonna need a stamp. According to what you tell us, personally, I don't have a problem with it. However, we need a full-size plan with a stamped surveyor. This is just a paper. It doesn't have a stamp or a real dimen, or a sca, I can't even read it, to be honest with you. And maybe some architectural plan. That's my opinion. We'll, we'll hear from the board. Okay?
Yep.
Uh, Wilma?
Yes, I, I agree with Nazee. I think we do need a, an architectural plan, 'cause I can't.
Engineer, I don't know if it's architect.
And a science site plan.
Yeah. There's an engineer that has worked on this and created the plan, so he probably has it in his office.
At least, like eleven, maybe two by three.
Sure.
Uh, Ken, do you have any input on that?
No, just, uh, this makes an improvement to the, uh, to the lot development.
Absolutely. I would just wanna see it though. Jimmy?
I can see it.
Yeah, I know. You read for me all the time.
I read, yeah. Cost me a lot of money for these things. Um, um... J.C. Engineering is the engineer on, on the, on the project.
Is that right?
And he, he prepared this just so it would fit in the folder.
Correct.
So he could eas, he could easily just spit out a larger plan to...
Absolutely. Those were emailed to me so that I could get nine copies and...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You couldn't even see it then.
Yeah, okay.
And we need a stamp, of course.
And, and he could stamp this then.
Jake?
Yeah. Questions at the...
No questions.
Jen? Carl? All right, I, uh, I mean... Listen, is there anyone in the audience against, wanna speak against this project? I hear none. Anyone in favor? I hear none. So I guess we'll... We'll continue it to... The twenty-eighth, is that sounds right? Do you have, you gonna be around?
Is that June twenty-eighth?
Yes. You have enough time to get the plan stamped and get us some, some architectural plans?
Or is it stat way over here?
You need, you want architectural plans too? You wanna see a, uh, elevation of the house?
Yeah, like facades, like, just front, side elevations and rear?
No, I meant this is the whole lot.
Could do that.
Right, it don't have, the elevations don't have to be stamped, but the site plan, we need a stamp.
Oh my god.
Yep.
So, uh...
Mr. Chairman, could I ask a question?
Yes.
Seems like a bigger than ten thousand.
Is any attempt, or has there been any discussion with J.C. with regard to Title V? I know that's not a purview of this board, but with the location of what they're showing here, uh, and knowing what the local wetlands regulation is and what Title V says, it looks like you're gonna need a variance from both.
And I would think that we will, but that's not in my purview, and that's gonna be something handled by the engineers and...
And the Board of Health.
It's not only the Board of Health, but D E P, because D E P has a minimum setback of ten feet from a lot line for the septic system. They have it shown right up to it. So you have to go through that process with them, with the state.
We understand this is a, a larger undertaking than usual, but you gotta start at step one.
I'm quite familiar with this lot.
Right. And it's ten thousand square feet, so that's a one-bedroom house, unless they add somewhere else. J.C. know what to do. It's a long process, and you have to go to Board of Health, but for now, we'll continue, I guess, to June twenty-eighth.
That's fine.
Okay?
Thank you.
Jim?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Second by Jen. All in favor to continue for, continue the hearing?
June twenty-eight.
Twenty-three dash seventeen till June twenty-eighth. Say aye?
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain. Okay, thank you.
Pass him back.
Petition twenty-four.
It's this one, too.
Dash seventeen, David Parker, one oh five Minot Ave.
Can I have the last one back?
Yep.
Brandi Hill.
I didn't have any.
Are you looking at that?
Oh, right next to me.
Okay.
The last one we didn't read. What are we doing now?
Yeah. You just gotta give us...
As a matter of housekeeping, before we start with you,
It's totally...
For the, for the public record, we gotta read the last one into the record.
We haven't, we've been away for a while, so we'll forget the last one.
Russ, we're showing some, some, we had an extra week off.
It's summer, it's fine.
This the last one? This is, I put things, okay, for the record, "The zoning board appeals to hold a public hearing on June fourteenth, two thousand seventeen, at six-thirty PM in room three-twenty of the Wareham Multi Service Center, forty-eight Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. zero-two-five-seven-one, for reconsideration of petition twenty-three seventeen for a variance slash special permit, and appealing the building inspector's determination from the requirements of Mass. General Law Chapter forty-eight, Section six, and Section thirteen twenty-two of the Wareham zoning bylaws to Lisa Williams Cudero, care of Leonard Bello, Esquire, one eighty-four Main Street, Wareham, Mass. zero-two-five-seven-one, seeking to demolish an existing foundation and construct a new, single-family home located at twenty-eight Old Glen Charlie Road, Wareham, Mass. That's on assess's map, one-twenty-nine lot, one-zero-eight-four, in the R-130 zoning district." Thank you.
All right, very well. That being said, we'll move to the second one. Thank you.
And now we will hear, "The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on June fourteenth, two thousand seventeen, at six-thirty PM in room three-twenty of the Wareham Multi Service Center, forty-eight Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. Zero-two-five-seven-one, for consideration of petition number twenty-four dash seventeen for a variance from the requirements of Article eleven, Sections one-one-one-eight, one-one-two-six-B, and one-one-two-five of the Wareham zoning bylaws to David Parker, Forty Court Street, Suite seven-hundred, Boston, Mass. Zero-two-one-zero-eight, seeking to remove and replace two existing signs located at one oh five Minot Ave, Wareham, Mass. That's on assess's map, forty-one, lots one, two, three, four, five, six, in the R-30 zoning district."
All right, name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm, uh, David Parker.
David what?
David Parker.
Okay.
And I represent the Preservation of Affordable Housing, which is a nonprofit affordable housing developer. And we are the owners of Brandi Hill Apartments at one oh five Minot Ave. And so we are trying to get a variance for a second freestanding sign. Currently, we received a permit for one freestanding sign. So the property is an affordable housing complex with one hundred twenty-two units spread across twelve buildings. Um, over the last six months, we've been doing a pretty substantial renovation of the property. Uh, we've been updating a bunch of the units. Um, we're doing energy retrofits, new insulation, new roofing, new windows, replacing vinyl siding with cementitious hardy panel, and updating the grounds and putting in a new playground. So with, in line with all of these renovations, we're trying to replace the two existing signs with two new signs that reflect Preservation of Affordable Housing's branding. Per the zoning code, we're only allowed one freestanding sign, which we've received permit for, except the, the two existing signs, they address traffic coming from both directions on Minot Ave. If we replaced one sign only, we'd be neglecting traffic coming from one direction or the other. We have research putting in a single sign that's double-sided, kind of right in the mouth of the entrance, except we got in touch with our property manager at the staff, at the, at the property, as well as our maintenance supervisor, and they said there used to be a kind of a landscaped island there, except every winter it would become destroyed when the snow plows came through. So since then, we've actually, the property has removed that landscape island. The new signs that we're proposing include information about ADA accessibility. That's also an item on the renovation right now. Seven ADA units are being converted. As well as the signs include information about fair housing opportunity. And the proposed signs are eighteen square feet, which is slightly smaller than the existing signs that measure around twenty-three square feet. And these new signs that we're proposing are the, the same signs that we've installed across our properties, across the state. So it would align, kind of connects Preservation of Affordable Housing's branding across all of its properties.
Okay, so you wanna do, take one sign out, replace it, and add another sign?
Uh, there's two existing signs.
Which one? Are you not putting a new one?
No, they wanna use both. They wanna use both locations and have two signs.
Right, and you already have them?
Yeah. We already have...
There's already signs there, but you wanna take them off, put a new ones?
Yes, there's two existing signs. We wanna replace them with two new signs in the same exact location.
Same size, same everything?
Slightly smaller.
And there's the sign right there.
Yeah, you can see, there's two dark green signs on both sides of that property entrance, and we will replace them with the sign right at the bottom.
Ken, they need a variance for this?
Yeah, they do. They, under the, uh... It's a special, it's a special variance under eleven twenty-five. It's not a, a forty-A variance.
Hmm, all right. Okay, Wilma, you wanna say something?
Um... He wants to take the two signs down on each side of the driveway and put one, another two on each side, right?
In the same exact location, yes.
And we have, uh... Where you have your drawing here, I lost the page. It looks like you want a two-sided sign.
It looks like a two-sided sign?
Yeah, I mean, that's, to me, the way you've got the drawing.
It's, it's one side.
It's a one, it's...
It's only one side?
Yeah, because the back is the woods.
I know the backs are woods, but it don't look like that's what they're requesting.
It's got thickness to it, but it's only one sided.
She's showing the thickness.
Yeah, the, um, the back of the sign is represented in the bottom right of your sheet. It's just the, it's gonna be a blank blue pane, um, the same color as the...
He wants to illuminate it?
Um... I don't...
That's not replacing it, that's adding.
The sign that we are, that is designed is not illuminated. And I don't believe there is illumination at the site right now.
Okay, Jimmy?
Okay, go ahead.
There's not illumination at the site right now.
No.
I do agree. I do agree with your property manager that an island in the middle is a real pain in the neck for snow removal.
Yeah.
I would've said the same thing. Put one in the middle and make it two-sided and the argument. But that was a very good point you made from a property management point of view. I actually think that's safer, what you're doing.
Yeah.
Um, I do find the existing signs to be very dark. I went down the road and looked myself. They get shadowed. You can't see them.
Very hard to see them, yeah.
I think the new signs and the new colors may be a little brighter. I think with today's technology, I mean, I'm not gonna tell you what kind of sign to have. I'm in favor, just so you know.
Okay.
Just for the point of conversation, if your sign maker can use a reflective style of paint, so that at night, when you come down the road, reflective paint, it's new, it's wonderful, that sign will jump out at you, and it'll make the sign much more visible in darker conditions. I've gone by both during the day and at night.
Okay.
Um, other than that, that's just a, that's not a condition. It doesn't, if you decide not to do it, it's not gonna change my vote. It's just a suggestion. Other than that, I wish you well.
Well, I, I agree with that, and let me outrun it by our sign manufacturer and see what they say.
Okay, Jake?
Uh, no questions.
Jen?
I don't have any questions.
Carl?
Nothing?
Anyone in the audience against this project? Anyone for this project? Hear none? Like to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Have a second? Second to close?
Second. Second.
Second by Jen. All in favor to close the public hearing? Say aye?
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain, so close decisions. Well, you gotta do some findings.
Um, well, first of all, we need a motion, don't we?
Right.
So I, I move to Grant.
You move to Grant.
I find it's not detrimental.
Your, your findings would be that it's to be impractical, impossible, or create an undue hardship, that the variance would only be permitted when it's determined by this board that the architecture of the buildings, the location of the buildings, with reference to the street or nature of the use being made of the buildings, is such that the variance would be in the public interest. And in granting the variance, you can, you can, shall specify the size, location of the signs, and impose other terms and restrictions as deemed to be in the public interest.
Or just put the paragraph, and Jasmine could read it out. For the findings, you know?
What's that zoning bylaw? Which, which, what's the...
Eleven twenty, section eleven twenty-five A.
Got that, Jasmine? Thank you.
I, I don't see any need to impose any conditions. I think that, uh, the proposed sign is fine. I think as presented.
Okay, do I have a second for Jim's motion?
Second.
Second by Jen. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain. Carrie's, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's pass it. To sign it before we go anywhere.
Said no, we're not gonna put in.
It's well.
Here you go, sir.
Thank you.
Sorry.
It's okay. I thought you were...
More shocking than...
Okay. Sign this.
You can go clean.
All right, petition twenty-five dash seventeen, Paul Driscoll, sixty-three, Puritan Ave.
Let me get that one back before I read this one. Did you send me back your packets on that last one?
Yeah.
Okay. I think I got hers already, so... I didn't draw the signature, sorry.
Just give us a minute.
I'll start reading this. Here, you can stuff that. I don't mean to make you become our secretary. "The Wareham Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on June fourteenth, two thousand seventeen, at six-thirty PM in room three-twenty of the Wareham Multi Service Center, forty-eight Marion Road, Wareham, Massachusetts, zero-two-five-seven-one, to consider petition number twenty-five dash seventeen for a special permit slash variance under Article six, Table six-twenty-one, and Article four, Sections four-four-two point one B, and four-four-three point one of the Wareham zoning bylaws to Paul Driscoll, Sixth Berkeley Road, Milford, Mass. zero-one-seven-five-seven, to construct a wraparound deck located at sixty-three Kiraton Ave, Wareham, Mass." sixty-three, Kiratun Avenue, Wareham, Mass, that's on the assessors' map, one-two-three, uh, one-three-two-two, in the R-one-thirty zoning district.
Okay, name and address for the racket, and tell us what you're doing, please.
Paul Driscoll, uh, Sixth Berkeley Road, Milford, Mass. I've built a, a summer home, my future retirement home, in White Island shores, and I would like to put a deck on the front of it, twelve feet out from the house, and wrap it around the side, coming out six feet on the north side, as well, the twelve feet in the front will set me over the twenty-foot setback, by four and a half feet.
And the sides?
On the sides, I'm still within.
Within the ten-foot?
And I'll, yeah, everything's fine there. In actual, I mean, there's thirty feet allotted for the road, the actual road itself, I'm well over thirty feet back from it, it's just the, what's been allotted for the roads, there's trees there, there's, there's hills, and it's not even close to drivable. The drivable part of the road is only about eight to ten feet wide.
There's a ten-foot after the road, there's ten feet of town land, and, yeah, that's your, that's your, what you're-
Okay.
Using as part of your argument.
It, well, I, I'm-
Yeah, I got you.
It shows it on the map, I, I don't do this every day. I'm just trying to put a deck on my house.
Okay, and that's, uh, there is an existing, existent non-conforming, right, Jen?
I don't think it's-
Non-conforming structure?
I don't think it's non-conforming, existent, existing.
Yeah, but on the side setback, on the, on the other side, I can't read it.
Right, I, it met all the setbacks requirements, I just built the house last year.
Oh, you built it last year?
Last year, yes.
Oh, okay, okay.
The, the building inspector's letter says it's already non-conforming.
Well, it's a non-conforming lot. It, it, it's a six thousand square foot lot. Very small lots in that area.
Alright.
This is up in the White Island-
Yes.
-area.
Oh, it's all on dirt roads.
Again, my opinion, when we do variances and setback and stuff, I'd like to see an engineer plan, stamped engineering plan, and something we could read, I can't read.
I have, I have the site plan stamped, with the as-built.
The existing found, the as-built from before, when you built the house.
Yep. That's what, I, I provided copies of that.
But they're small.
Right, uh, I brought a full-size copy with me, if you'd like.
Can we look at that?
Yeah, certainly.
So, it's, it's non-conforming lot size and-
It's a grandfather lot.
And setbacks.
Yeah, and setbacks. Right.
Correct.
Issue of coverage.
And coverage as well, too, it doesn't match the-
Setbacks, lot size, and coverage are non-conforming.
Correct.
Ah, okay, now I can see.
I don't see a letter from the building.
It's, it's in the back of your package.
Very back, okay. Maybe I can go far back enough.
Alright, Wilma, what do you have?
I see it, thank you, Jen.
My pleasure.
I just have, I have one question, um, it's, uh, you're, you're Paul Driscoll, right?
Yes.
Okay. On the, on the assessors' office, uh, you sold, you sold this in two thousand thirteen?
I sold it in two thousand thirteen to my uncle, and I purchased eighty Puritan Ave from my uncle.
Is there a debt now at all?
And then, in two thousand sixteen, we swapped properties back. This piece of property has been in the family for many years, and I had originally purchased it in two thousand thirteen with the hopes to build on it at some point, and the house next to my aunt and uncle, which is directly across the street from me, became available, so I purchased that, and I considered rebuilding that for my retirement home, but it was just gonna be, it was, it's just strictly a cottage, a tiny cottage.
It shows that you purchased it from David Bissonette?
Yes. Who purchased it from Adam Smolsky, who was my uncle, David Bissonette is a cousin. And then I sold it to Adam Smolsky, and then repurchased it from him.
Ken, could you give me some clarification with respect to the third bullet point in, um, Dave's letter?
That's the, uh, the section on groundwater protection overlay district, that, under Article Four, Section four-four-two-point-one, there's a restriction against the, uh, exist, uh, site coverage being allowed of fifteen percent. And under Section four-four-three-point-one, a use that exceeds the permitted coverage in his groundwater overlay production district may be allowed to conform to the requirements of the underlying district by special permit, provided the runoff mitigation is provided. So, if they handle the runoff, it was added by the increase in coverage, then they, by special permit, they're permitted to exceed those standards.
Alright, is there anyone in the audience wanna speak, or in favor or against? I hear none. I usually make trips, check out the neighbors, or then, like, the application before the hearings, I didn't have a chance today. Uh, I would like to continue and just drive by, just to see how it looks like, unless the board decides otherwise, you know, but personally, I'd like to take a ride and continue it to the twenty-eighth.
I don't, I don't object to continuing, I'd just like to, uh, clean up a little bit of, a little bit of housekeeping before we do that. I think we need both a special permit and a variance, as I'm reading this. He's gonna need a special permit regardless.
Because of the-
He needs a variance regardless.
He needs a spe, he needs a special permit to do anything because of its existing non-conformity.
Right.
Yep.
So, for that, okay, but if we find, if we find it to be substantially more detrimental, then he needs a variance. So, I wanna find out if we find it to be substantially more detrimental or not.
Well, also, if we think it substantially increases the non-conformity.
Correct, correct, so, if we can clean that up, then, if, if we find it, you know, I don't wanna make the guy come back ten times, 'cause we keep finding something new. Let's go do our drive-by, but-
Wha, what are the increases in the, uh, uh-
But, uh, is it, he's not asking a relief from thirteen to thirty-five, he, he needs a variance regardless, you understand? This is not an existing non-conforming structure.
Okay.
According to Dave, uh, Raquena, it is.
That's what I'm doing, I'm kinda reading Dave's letter and trying to, I don't want the dog chasing his tail.
He definitely need a variance, not a special, even if we decide, you know.
Well, he'll need a special permit as well, for the groundwater protection.
That's what I was gonna say, he needs a-
He's gonna need both.
Right, yes, yes.
Yeah.
I think you're gonna need both, so-
Right, 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 sorry.
So, do we need to determine if it's substantially more non-conforming?
Alright, alright.
And it's a deck, it's gonna have slots, slots between the boards and all that?
Drainage, right.
Right.
'Cause there were, there was considerations here about, um, stormwater runoff and surface water runoff, because of, because of it being in the overlay district. Charlie, what do you think? Do you think that this is a big deal? Maybe my language is too simple, but-
Is it a covered deck?
It's not gonna be a covered deck.
It's an uncovered deck, basically built over sand. That whole area, there's no soil, it's just all sand, drainage is instant.
I think we could possibly make a condition that the deck never be covered, to be conscious of the overlay.
What, what are the sideline setbacks?
You can't tell it.
Ten. He has like eleven.
He's got eleven, he's, he's, the only thing he's doing is he's coming, he's overlaying the frontage by four feet extra.
Right. Well, it's-
It's up in the Puritan era, you know?
Was there a special permit or anything issued on the lot to begin with?
There had to be for him to, to-
Uh, it's, I think it's a grandfather lot, it's a grandfather.
It's grandfather, yes, it was a special permit when I built the house.
Okay.
So, what setback from the street line are you gonna be using, because the R-one-thirty district is a hundred feet?
Right.
But under the grandfather, it's twenty. Why are you saying that it's an encroachment of only four and a half feet, if you're basically on twenty?
Because, because you can go back to the, well, okay, that's why I asked your opinion.
That's why he needs a variance for a setback, like what Charlie said. It is a grandfather lot, he's based on the setback when he built the house.
Thirty feet.
But, he has to, because it's R-one-thirty, the front setback is a hundred, so you need a relief from that. But, it's a small lot anyway, so.
Yeah.
Right, a hundred feet would put me at the back of the lot.
Right.
Would put you, your house on somebody else's lot.
Exactly.
It's a bad bylaw, they're all, you know, it's messing everybody up.
And what do you have now?
What do you mean? The lot?
Yeah.
Sixty by a hundred, six thousand square foot lot. It's only a hundred feet deep. Hundred-foot setback is the backside of the lot.
What do you, what is your current, what do you have now, uh, setback?
Uh, setback is twenty-seven and a half.
You have twenty-seven, and what will it be? Are you at, is you-
Put him to sixteen and a half.
Okay.
It'll be sixteen and a half, or fifteen and a half.
Okay, so, okay.
And it will fit in with the neighborhood, I've been a lifelong resident down there, summer resident, I plan to retire down there, I would never put anything that didn't fit the feel of the neighborhood.
I, my, uh, well, my opinion is that, set, putting aside the issue with the grant, groundwater overlay special permit, under Section thirteen thirty-five, we, we would have to, we would ha, I, I don't think that we could make the findings necessary to grant this as a special permit, I mean, there's a, it, there seems to be pretty, um, pretty significant increases in the non-conformities, with, uh, with respect to coverage, and with their, with respect to front setback.
But, there's, there's no, there's no percentage of, uh, impervious cover in that district, so, the twenty-five percent factor doesn't affect it.
Doesn't apply?
It really, it really doesn't apply.
I don't believe so, if you look at, uh, Section six-twenty-one, uh, maximum building coverage, says no regulation.
Oh, this is under the groundwater protection overlay district, the coverage-
I understand that.
...is talking about.
Yeah, yeah, but under that particular section, you have the, the, the board has the authority to waive that.
By special permit.
By special permit, right. And I wasn't making, I wasn't suggesting you can't do it for the-
No, no, I got it, I just wanted-
I'm just saying, what setback are you applying to the, to the variance issue, that's all I was saying, because the implication was it was only a twenty-foot setback, and it really isn't.
It really isn't, it's, yeah.
So, it- Used to be, but, since they went to the R-one-thirty, it's been a hundred feet.
I think we stimulated enough conversation, now I can drive by with everything in mind.
Okay.
And look, so, I, I move to continue.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jen, to continue until June twenty-eighth, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, so we'll see you June twenty-eighth, please, thank you. Pass them back. Alright.
Thank you, yeah, and, and we're gonna need one of these, so if you can go to JC and get them.
Yeah, for the racket.
Yeah, but, but, again, I don't wanna make you come back forty times, you know?
Alright, continue public hearing, forty-three dash sixteen, Christopher McIntosh, twenty-two High Dam Road, reconsideration of decision.
Is this a reread, or is this just a reconsideration? We've, is it, where are we?
Read it.
This is continued, this is continued, we don't need to read it, okay?
No, we gotta read it, it's a public hearing. I'll continue, it's open, never mind.
Yeah, it's been opened.
It is, the case is open, so, counselor, you, it's your-
Okay, just for procedural matters, this is, uh-
Just, just your name for the racket, quick, so she could kinda-
My name is Leonard Bello, and I'm representing the applicant, who's seated to my left.
Very well, go ahead.
So, uh, first, the people sitting on this to, to make a decision, Nazee would have to excuse himself from that vote.
Right.
You, this is a matter, just to go back, that Mr. McIntosh appeared before you on his own, um, there was a decision made to deny his request based on treating it as a variance, and it's to build a garage onto an existing home in an R-one-thirty district. And subsequent to that, there were other discussions, other cases that came before you, and they were treated as a special permit. I filed an application for reconsideration, the board voted unanimously to allow the reconsideration, and we re-advertized it just as if it were a brand-new case, so everybody's been re-notified, and we've re-advertized it for both a special permit variance and to appeal the building inspector's decision. So, initially, uh, this is a request for a special permit for a proposed forty-two by twenty-six, a ta, foot attached garage to the current structure on twenty-two High Dam Road in Wareham. The property involved is Christopher's primary residence, uh, it's currently structured as a single-family ranch-style house, uh, the attached garage is for covered parking, storage space, and, and to store personal property, uh, a special permit we suggest is, is what is required. A forty-two by twenty-six foot garage would provide a left setback upon completion of ten feet from the sideline, with the front being seventy-one feet, the other side being thirty-three-point-eight feet, the rear being eighty-five-point-six feet. The position of, of the applicant is, when this lot was created, it was created when this area was a twenty thousand square foot zoning requirement, so the lots were all created as twenty thousand square feet. When he purchased the property, he purchased it as a grandfathered lot, he was able to construct a house on it, he didn't have to conform to a hundred-foot setbacks, he had to conform to the setbacks that were in existence at the time the lot was created. Now, when he did that, as do, I would suggest, a lot of young people who are getting started, he's married, he has a small child, he works for our fire department, there was the original design of the, you look at, at that design, called for this garage.
This is thirteen thirty-two, we're looking at?
You'll see this plan is dated back in two thousand and twelve, when the house was built. Starting out, Christopher couldn't afford that garage on this house, it would put it out of his price range, so it was indicated right on the plan, back when he purchased it, that it's a, a future garage. All of the setback requirements that existed when this lot was created are being satisfied. So, when the lot was created, when he built this house, he could have put this garage on the house, he would have satisfied the ten-foot setbacks, he's not getting any closer to the front line, he's not getting any closer to the back line, all of this would have been done as a matter of right. I'd suggest to you that it really is a special permit, it's certainly not detrimental to the area, I have a number of photos, if people wanna see it, of the other houses in the area, they have these kind of garages, uh, Nazee's not sitting on this case, but he's constructing houses right across the road, which is Jordan Road, and they're the same-style houses, same-sized lots. It makes no sense for a lot to get increased from twenty thousand square foot requirement to a hundred and thirty thousand square foot requirement, and then impose on those people that bought it when it was twenty thousand, the setbacks of a hundred feet, and thirty or sixty feet on sidelines, the lot can't possibly be built upon with those type of setbacks. Those setbacks are geared for a hundred- Those setbacks are geared for 130,000-square-foot lots, not 20,000-square-foot lots. So Christopher's been at this for an awful long time at an expense much greater than he ever anticipated. But in order to stay where he is and have his family expand, he has to have this space. And if he doesn't, it's sort of a life-altering decision. He and his wife and his child have to look for somewhere else. He doesn't want to do that. He works in town, wants to stay in town, but he does need this relief in order to make this workable for him and his family. So we've asked you to reconsider this decision based on the standards of a special permit. And they're clearly met here. There's no detriment to the neighborhood. There's no wrongdoing on his part. I think that plan shows exactly what the intentions were from the day he bought this property.
Is this plan for the board to keep? Or is this a plan that we could get a copy of for the folder?
That's a plan from 2012, Jim.
I understand. I understand. But it's evidence that's being used. Is there another copy of this plan available?
I do not have one.
He does not have another copy of that plan. I assume that...
J.C. Engineering?
They can be made, can't they, Charlie? Another copy of a plan that size?
They still have the file, but even if they don't, you could go to Staples, and they'll copy it for a couple of bucks.
Right. So I'm sure we could get a physical copy of the plan.
I kind of think I'd like to have a copy of this in the folder.
Sure.
Particularly if we find in favor, so that there's something in the folder that backs up our decision.
Yep.
Because it is good evidence. I'd like to ask, just curious, is it the fact that Nazee's building in the neighborhood that...
No, no, because Lenny, at the time, was...
Representing the case. Nazee in other matters, and therefore Nazee would not be voting against it.
Okay. I just wanted to know for the record if he was in the butter or across the street or... He... Okay. Do you want to see this plan? Yeah, let me pass it on down. And looking back at this application here, I see two separate letters from the building commissioner with two separate dates, if I am correct.
Two separate building commissioners?
Two different commissioners, okay. Let me just go back and... I'm seeing David Moore dated August 31, 2016, come into an opinion requiring a variance. Blah, blah, blah. And then I come forward in the folder here, and I see a letter dated April 20, 2017 by David Raquena. And his opinion is that this would require a special permit.
David Raquena was here when we asked for reconsideration, and I believe he agreed. And at the time, the board agreed that this should be decided on a special permit rather than variance. And that was the basis for which the board agreed to...
And the building commissioner feels it's a special permit. As a board, we voted that it should be a special permit. So we don't need to wax redundant on that matter. I believe what we're hearing is a request for a special permit.
Thank you.
Okay. Does the board agree or concur with me on that?
A second.
Okay.
Just for the record, Jake Morrison will be voting in my place, okay?
Thank you. Okay. So have we asked anybody from the room, if they're from the public, in opposition to this? Is there anybody here that is in opposition to this? Is there anybody here that's in support of this? Hearing none from either side, I turn to the board. Starting with you, Wilma, do you have any questions from the petitioner?
Yeah. This new plot plan that was given to us has 10 feet from the side of the garage. And the plan that they gave us, the big one, says 12.
Yep. Yeah. The original plan that was handed out there was given to me upon signing when I purchased the house. It was kind of what I thought I could do in the future. And then the newest plan is what I want to propose to do.
So that one there, though, is...
Two feet, yes.
Will be different.
I think that Attorney Bello was just giving us this older plan to show us that this was what was contemplated all along.
Correct.
And just to note that Mr. McIntosh, at the time, being a young, probably first-time homeowner, it wasn't feasible financially, but it was something he had hoped to do down the road. But you're saying that your plans of... Your... The way you want to do it is change a little bit's going to be two more feet.
Yes.
But it's still two feet closer to the line than the original plan.
I might add, that line there is just the forest, which is unbuildable land. It's Wareham Fire District Plan.
All right. Not to split hairs with you, I think the land is perfectly buildable, but I think it won't be built because it's held in public by the public.
No big deal.
So you're asking for a little bit... Two feet wider and from the original, but quite a bit deeper.
Yes.
That doesn't affect the setbacks at all? Instead of being 24-foot square, you're going to go a couple feet wider, 26, and instead of being 24-deep, you're going to be 42-deep?
Yes.
Which makes a nice garage. You can actually get a car and all that other stuff that stops the car at the same time.
I just want to build it once. I want to build it once and not have to change or alter from there.
Yep, okay. Jake, you have any questions? Are you done, Wilma? I'm sorry.
The only thing is that the side setbacks for R-130 are not 10, so...
That's why we're here, though, I think.
I agree. Jake, any questions from you?
No questions. I think it's a good project. I'm familiar with the neighborhood and a lot of the houses. There's a lot of similar houses to that that are tied up inside the lot line. So I think it's a good project for the neighborhood.
Um, I don't have any questions. I would be in favor of it.
Okay. Carl, do you have any questions? Although Nazee cannot vote, I certainly can hear from him if he has any comments.
I'm okay with it.
Okay. So we've heard from everybody. It doesn't seem to be there's any opposition. Does the town engineer have any...
No comment.
Planner?
Just that the front yard setback of the existing... Of the proposed garage is going to be the same as the existing dwelling?
Correct.
And it won't extend further than the...
As acting chair, I will avoid making a motion, but I'm ready to hear a motion.
Close the public.
To close it to the public? Could somebody make a motion to close this hearing to the public?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
Second.
Second by Carl. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes.
It passes.
Closing the public hearing?
Yeah. We're closing it to the public. Now we can vote.
She opposed.
It's okay. Still carry 4-0. 4-0. 4-1-0.
4-1-0, yep. So I'm still looking for a motion to grant or deny.
I make a motion to grant as presented.
Thank you. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
And seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
It passes. 4-1-0. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you for your time.
Nice evening.
Lenny? Can you draft a decision on this? I'm emailing, please.
Jane, you're writing it, huh?
With the findings.
No.
This was... We're going to do...
You don't need it, like, immediately, do you?
No.
No, and are you going to take this back and bring us a copy? I'll make that a condition of the approval, that you bring that into the... Drop it off in the office. Thank you. Do we need to write a few things in here?
Lenny's going to...
Lenny's going to take care of it. We're going to attach it. Reason for granting, not detrimental.
Just kind of take two minutes recess. I gotta make a phone call, Carl. So we can incorporate it, of course, after we read it, like we do.
The Toby House? Just that I'm aware of is the agenda. There's nothing on there.
No, we sign that, no. But we make a thing, but if his decision...
We're going to sign it, and he's going to...
Unless we could do the standard one.
You could probably do a standard one.
I'll do the standard. I'll call and say nothing.
This is not the historical condition. It's not the board's appeals.
We define, you know, the standard.
Excuse me, I'm trying to find it.
We're good. Not significant, not detrimental.
Ooh, is it supposed to be in the multi-service center?
They're having a meeting tonight. I don't know where it is. Did you check over in Town Hall in Route 27?
Andreas, no.
On the third floor, top floor.
Want us to move forward?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We're just slow signers. We have to sign this one before we do anything else because...
No worries. I have a five-year-old that I have to pick up at Wareham Crossing at 8:30, and I was sitting back there going, "I didn't bring his car seat."
8:30?
So does that mean I have to be the parent that has to buy a car seat?
You either have to buy a car seat or somebody has to deliver one to you.
Unbelievable. I haven't found one so about the time they actually brought me a car seat, I'm like, "Yeah." They get so gross and dirty after a while.
I've bought more car seats than I care to tell you about, and then I have a stepdaughter that decided the one I bought was wrong, so she used it.
Oh, love those.
It wasn't wrong, it was just...
Yeah, it was almost like the first one with the folders.
No, there is... Yeah, yeah, yeah. But there's weight limits and it gets... She's a car seat Nazi, and that's okay.
Yeah, parenthood makes you that way.
Yeah, it does. They deserve our attention.
Well, they do.
Okay.
Changed my mind.
And this is... This is... This needs Carl. This is... That was this one, right?
Yeah. Just pull my...
So let's put this there with Carl and let him file it.
What's the next one that we're on, too?
All right. Next one, petition 17-17, JNJ Holding LLC, 2371 Cranberry Highway. I will accuse myself on that case due to that I have direct interest in it. So, and Jim will chair, and Jake Morrison will be voting on that.
Fine, and you?
Well, thank you. Nothing exciting. Just a group from a different age, girl, saying there's any application.
This is JNJ, right?
Yes.
All right. I'm going to go outside. You guys beat yourself up with it.
We don't... We have to...
We can cut him.
We're going to get rid of it. No, it's in the box here. So...
All right, this is all due. It's all done.
Job done. Let me put that one away.
Thank you.
That's good. Too bad you don't smoke cigarettes. You'd have a reason to leave.
You guys should take our lot, too.
Okay.
Take that one.
We've got some... Any next one we done?
Sure. We'll step out. You're going to be in the back lot? Here, Carl. Put you in. And for Jake. And for Wilma. And for myself. Here, is this the same thing? This more?
It's the back side.
Stormwater report. Do any of you guys want to copy the stormwater report at this point? Or you want to know that it's available, you need to see it?
Well, it's available at the...
Thank you. Last junk to hand out.
And we want all of it.
What do we get from Charlie? One...
One of those now.
This is from Charlie. This is one, two...
Do you need one of these?
Three. Yeah. Take one and pass them along. This is...
Got your own.
Alan and Janelle's opinions.
Sure, I kept a copy.
Okay.
You keep one here for me.
That's your coffee. Oh, what are your coffees at?
So it looks like a very simple case.
Oh?
Yes, it is.
Based on this small amount of information.
I don't...
Tiny packet.
This has been read into the... This has been read into the record. We're ready.
This is a continuation.
This is a continuation.
Yeah, the third.
So we're talking about... We're talking about 17-17, JNJ Holdings, Inc. Go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Andrea McKnight. I am a lawyer. My office is out of Buzzards Bay, and I'm here with Brian Grady, who's with GAF Engineering. It's our pleasure tonight to represent JNJ Holdings in the property that's at 2371 Cranberry Highway. If the board is not familiar with the property, it's essentially a vacant building on a big sandy lot over by the... I'm going to mess this up. Waleka Moving and Storage over on Cranberry Highway up towards the district corp, but not quite that far north. If it would be permissible with the board, we would like to start with having the variance heard regarding the landscaping buffer because getting your opinion on that may or may not change the direction of where we go in the future.
I don't have an objection unless it is another member of the board that would like to bring up any objection.
Objection to that?
Oh, go ahead. Proceed.
Thank you. So the landscape buffer that we're talking about is on the lot, which is a rectangle. That triangles off when I go westwards. If you look at the attachment, the application, you'll see the buddy lots. They are all different shapes and sizes in this area. The one in the block where Waleka sits comes out, comes up here. There's another lot which is over here, which sort of makes this weird C-shaped form. There's a larger lot in the back. And what we're talking about in this case is an existing building that sits approximately right here. That building, because I want to get my sizes right, is a 48-by-96 slab in a structure that is on it. The building was added in additional 24-by-36 addition to it. And what the project proposes is that existing structure be removed, and we use the existing concrete slab, and we want to eliminate the 24-by-36 addition. So we're reverting back to the 48-by-96-foot slab. We want to add on additional 54 feet. What does that have to do with landscaping? When this slab is finished, we are looking to have it come straight back. Because we're talking about a commercially zoned lot, a budding industrial zone lot, Because we're talking about a commercial zone lot, a budding industrial zone lot, we have to have a twenty-foot landscape buffer. So the piece that will require the variance is this small shaded area. It's about five-hundred-and-twenty-four square feet down in the corner over here. And so that is what the first item is that we would attack with the variance itself. Now, the lot itself, again, we talked about the different lots in the area. The soil conditions are a coarse sand and a gravel. The primary rectangle here is all coarse sand. When we get to the rear of the lot, the first shaded area in here, this is a gravel. So if we start to try to turn buildings or change the angle of any, we're gonna hit the gravel area, and why that matters is that there's actually wetland area behind our lot, and there is a encroachment of the hundred-foot buffer, which we are not going to do any work with the hundred-foot buffer, but that does exist to a period of the lot. So we're hoping to keep this thing as is so that we're not gonna have to worry about what's gonna happen with the hundred-foot block over here. So that is the first piece in terms of the topography, or of the, excuse me, size of the lot and what the soil is made up of. We talked about the wetland setback, and it's a small area that we're looking to conquer with this variance itself. In addition to that...
Would you point out, you said the small area, and I see it there. It's black and white. Would you point at it again for me, please, where you're gonna need the, what we're floating on right now?
Would it help if I brought you that?
What would really help is if you took this highlighter and circled it, if you don't mind.
So you can see, it is this area right here.
Do you mind, uh...
Not at all.
Thank you. That's even less than I thought.
Yeah. Now, the real variance comes in from the corner of the building to the industrial line next door, the thirteen foot, or thirteen foot setback. So if this was commercial to commercial, we're looking at a ten-foot. If it was industrial to industrial, we're looking at a ten-foot, but we're looking at commercial to industrial, so we're requiring twenty feet. So we are at thirteen feet where this building is as it's proposed, and what is there right now? So the pictures that I supplemented today give you an idea that this is sand. It is sand, starting at about the start of the building, running all the way back. There's a retaining wall that separates the Waleka lot from this lot. There is absolutely no bushes, no trees, nothing in existence right now. So we're looking at a massive improvement to this property. I certainly don't think this would be detrimental to the public good at all. We're looking at a large improvement in this area. And I think that this is, um... One of the thoughts was to try to alleviate this particular variance. We're looking, or by moving the building, we have to look at demolishing the concrete slab, and we're looking at an extreme financial hardship to the owners just to reset the entire footing of the building. So we're hoping...
And this, this little area that I just had you shade for me is in the proposed addition to the existing slab, within that area.
That's probably the fifty-four-foot addition that we're looking, when we revert to the original slab and then tack on fifty-four feet, it's that fifty-four-foot slab that is going to create this thirteen-foot setback.
But in just one narrow part?
Very correct. It's a five-hundred-square-foot, five-hundred-and-twenty-four-square-foot area.
Right.
Twenty-seven-foot square-foot area.
What's that? What is it?
Jake.
So there are pictures in the back of the package of the application. Again, show you one angle looking down from this point of view where you can see that there is no landing or whatever.
Not these. Not these.
No, that's correct. Those pictures are taken from the other point of view, so you can make sure that what we're talking about is intact, correct. We're not gonna hide anything with the pictures. You can see it from both directions.
With regard to this section of this, this proposal, with regard to this variance only, is there anybody here in the room tonight or from the public in opposition to this variance? Is there anybody here in the room tonight from the public in favor of this? Hearing none, I move to the board, starting with, again, with you, Wilma. You always like to go first. Do you have any questions on, we got just the variance, nothing else. She's gonna finish her presentation, but we want to just talk about just this one little bit of minutia.
Well, the only, the only... The only thing I see, I know the area, and I know the lot, and it needs a variance, more or less because the, if you're selling cars, it has to be paved, the whole area.
Yeah, but I'm not talking about, well, what, all I'm talking about right at this moment is this small triangle, the variance for that little area. The, um...
This one over here?
For a buffer. If you, if you would, Karenie, if you would just come up and, so that she's clear what she's looking at.
So this is a larger version of this building that you're looking at.
Okay.
And this is the landscape plan. And we're only talking about this pink highlighted area, which is what the variance would be required for, because this setback, because it's commercial to industrial, is required to be twenty feet. If it was commercial, it would be ten, industrial, industrial, ten, but because we're commercial to industrial, we'll require twenty. When the building comes back in this space only, we'd be at about a thirteen-foot setback rather than a twenty-foot setback. So this area is a five-hundred-and-twenty-seven square-foot area that we'd be requesting a variance on.
You said, "When the building comes back, you're gonna add to..."
No, meaning that when the building comes here...
Yeah.
Where the building will end will be thirteen-foot setback as opposed to the required twenty. That's what we need there.
Just that corner.
All right.
Do I have any further questions? I can turn to Jake. Jake, on, just on this portion of the...
No questions at this time.
Ken?
I don't have any questions.
Okay. And per your request, you asked us to make a determination just on this alone. I don't know, I don't, I'm not even sure if we can, can we vote in parts like this? Can we vote on just the variance on just that section?
No, you have, can have a straw vote, but you have to close the...
We could have a straw vote just on that, so that she has a feeling of how the board feels about that, without, without closing this hearing.
Correct.
Okay.
Do either of you have any input or thoughts on this, or...
The... I thought I had my letter with me.
Well, we're gonna get, I got a copy of it, I got a copy of it, and if you want a copy, I have an extra.
Why don't you hold on for a minute?
Yeah, yeah, we'll...
I did have some comments on it, because when I first looked at this, I read the summary that was included with the documentation. I don't see anything unique about this lot with regard to the soil conditions, the size of the shape. It's got over an acre and a half. The only reason we're looking at this as a variance is the orientation of the building. Nothing has been said about the possibility of...
Jogging.
...justing the size or the shape of the building in such a way that you can maintain that twenty feet. Soil conditions are exactly the same from there to Toby Road. As far as that little brook in the back is concerned, it's the same. It's the same on the other side of Cranberry Highway. I see nothing unique about that, just from my own point.
So, no, no, from your point, I, I had this...
I don't see why, even if they keep the slab for the existing building, the addition could be put on in such a way that no variance is required. Now, it does require...
So you'd have to jog the building forward seven feet, if I've been listening, Kathy?
Slide the back of it.
The back?
Slide the back over, or do some other sort of a shape in there, which would accommodate the same size. You'd have to relocate some...
That's what I'm saying. The new slab could come...
Yeah, it could be slid.
Could be slid.
But still be attached to the back of the existing building, slid back, so there's no...
There's a jog in the building.
Yeah. So I don't, I don't see why there's a need for variance when that option is available. And quite frankly, you haven't seen any indication that that couldn't be done.
Case law suggests that a self-imposed hardship is not a hardship.
Okay. Carl, we haven't got to Carl yet. Carl, did you have any?
I have mine.
Okay. So I tend, I personally tend to agree with what Charlie brought up. Ken makes a good point. How big a deal would it be to just push that whole slab? What are we, you were at thirteen feet and we need twenty?
Right, at minimum.
So you're moving, you're talking seven feet?
You're talking seven feet. It's about a fifty thousand dollar project.
What's fifty thousand?
Be starting all over again, so really, I mean, just to...
The engineering, or...
Just to get the base foundation of the concrete building.
Not gonna change any of the existing foundation, just the addition.
Right, and so the idea of the building itself is to sell cars.
Mm-hmm.
There will be minor repair bays that exist, so having a straight rectangle is key to that, because if you start jogging the building, then getting car bays coming in, they're not gonna work on angles, because there are two center ones that are angled. You can't drive two cars in a different angle.
I'm not asking, not suggesting we angle it. Maybe if I ask you to come up here again, I'm much better with pictures than I am with words.
I'm probably the same way.
And I know, and, and so, if I understand correctly, this is the existing foundation.
That is correct.
And you're gonna put an addition on something like this, just keep, this is going out.
That's correct.
So this is gonna continue this way and this way, and in so doing, it's gonna gradually get closer to this line as we go further back.
That's correct.
So I think what I heard Charlie say, and I think what I'm saying, is if we need twenty feet and we've only got thirteen, why couldn't this addition be here like this? And then you can still drive straight in. Yeah, he's gotta...
Set it forward.
And just set it forward. That's all, that's all I think Charlie's suggesting. And I don't mind if the applicant comes into the room and answers this question. She's not gonna persuade us one way or the other.
Sure, and I think that from a business standpoint, it, to set forward a bay off one another for car repairs, my guess is that when they did the addition, they're looking at four bays across the building, so this offset is really gonna impact sort of where the...
Where the bays are. If they lose a bay, that's a good basis of his argument. If they don't, it's not.
And then they're, and then they're not gonna be able to have equal levels when you go into repair points and having car repairs, the same depth within the building could be impacted. But the other piece of it is, is that when we're talking about a five-hundred-and-twenty-seven square-foot variance here, I disagree that the lots within the area are not different. I think that if you look at the plans, you can see that this lot comes right back, this lot wraps around, this lot's like a giant jigsaw puzzle, and it's all the way around. So, you know, exactly, because I do respect you absolutely, Charlie. I don't agree that this, the lot, the size of this lot is different. I understand we are looking for an increase to the existing building, but we're trying to create it in such a way that if we have to demolish this original slab to turn the building...
No, I wouldn't, I wouldn't. That, what I think, would be a hardship. I agree with that. But sliding this section forward, I'm hearing from, you represent the applicant.
Right.
I see the engineer up here. I'd love to hear the applicant's own personal comment on that, if he feel, if there's, I mean, if your point about the bays not, if this, if this line here in the building happens to split down the middle of a bay, well, then I, I can understand somewhat of a hardship. If it happens that it doesn't, then my sympathy level dwindles.
Yeah, we would need the input from the applicant in conjunction with the architect who's laying out the building.
Do you wanna, you wanna talk to him about that? Because I'm sure we're not gonna make a decision tonight. You wanna talk to him about that?
Sure.
Or address, so we'll...
Table it.
I think, I think we'll table that section of it. I know you wanted, I know you wanted some kind of an indication from the board on this matter before you gave us the rest of your presentation. So I guess I would advise you to continue your presentation with the thought that we may be adverse to this variant, this bit of variance. It may or may not, but...
Jim, on, on, on three.
On page three?
Yep. It shows existing conditions and demolition plan.
Yeah, I'm on that page.
Oh, you are. Now, it shows that existing had to be removed in the back, and then it also shows that it's to, the building is to be raised.
Yes, that, they've already said that. That's...
Yeah, but I mean, they're gonna take that out of there, that building.
The building, but the slab they're gonna reuse.
Why are they removing the slab on the back where they are looking to add?
It's only a partial slab wall.
Yeah, but it still will hold a bay.
But it doesn't, it may not have footings that are set up. I don't know what the reason for that slab was.
What it looks like, and then...
But it may not have been for a building, so...
Yeah, that's more like a concrete apron, apron and not a foundation.
Oh, 'cause it says...
It just says it's a pad.
It's a pad. It's not a found, yeah, so it's probably inadequate to support the new building. I understand your question. I don't think it's, I don't think it applies at this point. I mean, I get it. I get what you're...
It just, uh...
I, um, okay. Any other comments from the board before I set her loose on the rest of her presentation?
I get to turn it over to Brian, so this is the easy part.
The floor is yours, ma'am or sir?
Jim, there is one.
Okay.
Respect of the notice. I just had a question of, on page two of my letter. It appears to me that one lot was not included in the list of the others. Lot ten thirty-nine A on Assessors Map ninety.
Which number is this?
We, we noticed them. I got your comment letter, and we noticed them.
You did send them notice?
Yes.
But when was that? Which item was that, Charlie?
Item number four on page two of my letter.
Item number four under the prospective, project narrative or the variance?
Of my letter.
His letter.
And what, I think, is this your letter?
That's, that's...
And then on the second page, there's, there's two number fours. Okay, thank you. Under the, under the variance, comments on variance, general variance, then prospective narrative. Okay, thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Onto phase two. What the applicant is proposing at this location is a used car sales and service. The, I'm sure you're all familiar with the lot and the current state that it's in and the location. We feel that this is a significant improvement for this property. The original building goes back, I believe, to the fifties or, can't exactly determine the date. It has been used for automobiles and service in the past. There's a previous license that has been issued for it. We did make application to the selectmen a number of years ago for a used car license. We do have, actually do have a curb cut from Mass Highway for the property. What the applicant's proposing is approximately space for a hundred and four cars on the lot. You'll see in the back gravel storage area, we're allowing for forty cars to be stored there on a temporary basis. We have allowed for ten cars to be inside the building in the service bays, and the remainder of the vehicles will be out on display. All cars here will come from dealer auctions, brought back to the site, put into the storage area, and then serviced in the building for whatever minor repairs that they need, detailing, and put out on the lot. So the turnaround for that is expected to be a number of days to a week, because if they're not sitting on the lot, they're not for sale. So the turnaround in that storage area, we expect to be quite quick. And the reason we're doing, we're counting all those, 'cause license, an application needs to be made for the selectmen based on the number of vehicles on the lot, so that's kind of why we've maxed it out. We don't anticipate to get to that level. If we do, the applicant would be quite happy. It's a successful business. But we're making allowance for the worst case or the best case scenario, depending on your viewpoint. We have nineteen parking spaces allowed for employees. You'll see in the letter from the building commissioner that he agrees with that count, ninety employee parking spaces. And that's the project in a nutshell. We've, you can see the pavement. We do have a drainage report. We have received Charlie's comment letter. I do have a response to that, which I haven't submitted yet, because we really haven't had a hearing or discussion yet. So we will address Charlie's comments based on his review and based on where we go with, I guess, the decision regarding the variance. So we will address any of Charlie's comments and your comments as well, moving forward. So that's a quick summary of the proposed project. We think it's a good project, a significant improvement for this property and for the area, and, you know, if I could respond, any questions?
Okay, thank you. And again, now that we've heard the, is that basically your entire presentation?
That's it in a nutshell, and I just...
Now that we've heard the entire presentation, I'll ask again if there's anybody here from the public in opposition to this project, or anybody here from the public in favor of this project. Hearing none, I move back to the board and advisors, and instead of starting with you, Wilma, I'm gonna go to the other end and start with Jake. Do you have any questions at this time?
Uh, no questions.
Ken?
I don't have any questions.
Carl?
I have one. I have mine.
None. Wilma?
Okay, um, he, presentation he, is they don't, he didn't have any, um, what would I, how would I put it? Okay, presentation he, is they don't, he didn't have any, what would I, how would I put it? Information on the cars that need to be washed every day, or at least rinsed off. The amount of water for 50 cars is, I think, a good amount. And he's only got, he uses for the office 200. Per day per car, 150 gallons in the lift. And the actual flow, it will exceed 200 gallons a day. Now, I know if you're going to wash a car, especially if we've had some dirty weather and snow, you're going to have to have enough to get out there with a sponge and wash it, and then rinse it. So I think we should have at least for the water system to have an idea of how much and how often he's going to wash the cars. Is he going to wash the cars out back, or bring it forward to show? Or is he just going to wash the cars out front?
We can get you an answer to that question. Yep. Now, you're looking at the impact statement report?
Yeah.
Yeah, those refer to Title V flows, yes.
Yeah, it refers to Title V here, which you don't have, which you have to have put in. There's no sanitary facilities, which I don't know how it ever opened without all the people that used to work in that.
Well, the existing building does have a septic system.
No.
Anything else, Wilma?
And parking. I honestly think, even though Nazzy can't sit on the board, but if he was anybody else, he could be sitting up here with Brian to answer questions.
Oh, I'm...
You know, they leave the room, you usually leave the room when you have to sit, and you're sitting up here.
Yep. Do you have questions of him that you'd like to have him come back in? I can call him back into the room.
Oh, I mean, he...
He just didn't want to be gross, giving you the hairy eyeball while you asked hard questions.
I can go get him if that would be...
Would you please, yeah?
I mean, I...
And Charlie, I will turn to you at some point.
We're not really going to finish this today anyway, so...
I did want to point out to you that there's one more area that they're seeking a variance on and is the right front corner. There's another 620 square feet there that's not in there.
Okay.
And what you marked out in pink.
Okay, so when we...
Look on sheet...
When I turn to you, we'll add, thank you.
Okay.
I want to let Wilma finish her interrogation before we...
He ran away.
Set you loose.
He's gone.
I will text him. He said to call when we were done, so I'll just send him a message.
Yeah, just send him a message. Do you have anything else you want to mention? We can come back to you when he shows...
Come back.
Okay. I will mention, before I go to the planner and the town engineer, I think we would like to see a plan that shows an elevation of the building, what it's going to look like from the street, and maybe, you know, from the sides. It's not something that we don't, it's something that we often ask for, and I see one coming forward already.
Yes.
So...
I think part of the initial holdback is that we wanted to sort of see where the board felt with that landscape issue.
Yeah, I got it. I got it. I will comment that I think, I do think, whether he's on the board or not, I have watched a lot of projects that he's done, and he always does do a class project. I'm happy to see the lot and the end of town continue to improve. But all that said, I will turn to Charlie. Now, you have a several-page report. You want to... Oh, wait a minute. Nazzy's here, so let's go back to, before we go to you, Charlie. Wilma wants to grill you herself, face to face. But the records show that Mr. Akalasi has returned to the room, and he's sitting here as an applicant.
What's the question?
Go ahead. Wilma, I'd turn the mic back to you.
Okay. I'm asking questions, first of all, on your water usage. And are you going to wash your cars in the back as well as in the front?
Not in the back, if in the front.
So what if, so what if somebody comes in and they want to see a car out back? You're going to show them dirty cars?
In the back, no, we won't let them in the back.
You won't let them, so you...
We have to fix them, prep them, and pour them in the front. We won't really sell, show them in the back.
And the amount of water that you'll be using, you have to wash your cars if you're have every intentions of selling the ones out front.
Right.
They should be kept clean daily and washed. And you should have somebody out there, especially if they're a dark-colored car or something white, you know, I mean, something that shows the dirt. And traveling, the cars that travel by Cranbury Highway do, especially the trucks going to the industrial park.
But they're going to be detailed. Most likely will be detailed and sharp and be displayed. Only time I could see washing, like, from Poland and stuff like this. But we're not going to be like, if you're asking, like, power washing.
No, I'm just, yeah, I'm...
It's not an everyday thing, like, this time of year, a couple of times from the Poland, that's it.
No, I'm just saying that you haven't got listed the amount of water that you would use washing cars and be using. And I feel it should.
The water the Palmer would make.
And then I don't know the size of your Title V septic system that will be going in.
Title V is decided by the board of health.
Yeah, but I'm saying, I'm saying the size that will be going in, you'll need to have water for that. I mean, it's...
You're saying to factor it in when you're doing that. And one of the other things that I've frequently seen with auto dealers, if you will, is that they actually make a contract with a car wash company and send their cars straight down Cranbury Highway and get them washed and help improve business. So that might be another option as well.
I think it's, I think the applicant made a valid point. We're here to address zoning, not septic.
Yeah, but it is zoning. It's pots of zoning because of the way you're going to set the cars up.
The car wash water doesn't go into the septic system. Is that your question?
No, it'll go into the ground.
Yeah, it doesn't go into the septic system, so...
If I may, real quick...
And going into the ground, they're going to have to have...
Hang on a minute, Jake, we'll get to you.
Seepage going into the ground shouldn't...
It goes into the catch basins, which go through the, you know, the stormwater treatment system.
Wilma, Jake wanted to speak to your question.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Jake.
I guess I just know a little bit about pressure washing and water and how much, how much pressure washers actually use. I have a friend that owns a company that goes around and washes vehicles. That's what he does for them. He has a 40-gallon tank in his car, his electric pressure washer. He can do probably 10, 15 cars with, maybe even more than that with it. They're very efficient. And he can clean a very muddy vehicle, so it's not like he's going to be, I don't think, that's going to be a huge issue using 200 gallons of water. I think he could efficiently get all the cars cleaned, and that's all. It just doesn't use that much water for the new, if you just had a hose wide open cleaning cars, he uses a lot of water, but they obviously not going to do that. They're going to use the pressure washers that don't use a lot of, they're energy-efficient and water-efficient pressure washers they use nowadays. That's all.
Thanks, Jake.
And then one other thing, and he knows I'm going to ask this question, is you're paving the area where you're going to have the cars.
Well, it's done by the book. Everything is top-notch. It's all done by the, everything's like, going to be done right.
You know why I'm asking. That's why...
What's the question? I'm sorry. I just want to make sure.
About paving the...
Paving the area where the cars are going to be parked.
You paving it?
Paving it.
Paving.
They have to have, they can't have cars in, on dirt. Because this oil could be coming out of the car if, and also if there's any kind of oil or transmission fluid or anything else seeping into the fluke. They have to, they have to have it paved. That's my last statement on that.
Thank you, Wilma. And not to argue with you, but I want to repeat, we're zoning. I think the paving issue is part of licensing and part of conservation and part of...
It's part of...
Other jurisdictions, I think our biggest concern tonight is zoning. But that's okay. Thank you, and I think it's a valid question. Going back to the board, Jake, did you have any questions now that you've heard Jan and Carl? I do have a couple of questions. Naz, while you weren't here, we were discussing the setback and how, when you extend the building in the back, how it's going to cause you to encroach upon the required setback because of the different zoning. Just for your edification, we kind of drew on one of the plans here.
I drew it.
Okay, you drew it for them. So since we had that discussion, I've now had the opportunity to look at this. And I see five garage doors. So in the proposed addition to your slab, does that addition interrupt any of the, either of the last two bays? There's a personnel door all the way to the rear of the building, and then there's two overhead doors.
How much you want to push it forward?
What?
Like 10 feet? How much?
Seven feet, I think, is all you need. Can you...
So how much? How many feet?
I think, I think a seven-foot jog, if you slid it, it doesn't even have to be the whole addition, as I interpret this plan. When I say addition, I mean additional slab. You're going to add 50 extra feet. Is it possible to... Is it possible to jog enough of the additional slab such that you wouldn't have this encroachment? If encroachment's the right word.
So you want us to modify the plan and push it like 10 feet, that last three bays or so?
It could be the last single bay, if that's all it takes.
If you made that split at the, between the second and third overhead doors, it's an automatic.
Did you say second and third? Or you mean last and next to last?
Yeah, you've got the single little entrance door at the end, then you've got two bays.
Yeah.
You go between the second bay and the third bay.
But I don't know where his, I don't know where his existing slab ends. That's what... That's what I'm trying to determine here, so that...
The existing slab ends about 10 feet before that.
Okay, go ahead. What do you got? Yep, please do come up so that we can...
What if, what if this is an option?
Come on, thank you, Charlie.
This piece right here, which is shaded, is a, I did not mention this before. This is also part of the request for variance, because that's parking.
Okay.
Let's say that we gave this up and we started the pavement here so that we did not need a variance for this piece. Let's say that this right here is all gravel in here.
Yep.
And then we keep our dumpster there. Let's say we made this all landscaping here.
Yep.
So if the only piece that we're talking about is this building corner right here, would the board feel any differently? So we are only talking about a variance for seven feet by, I mean, we're talking about a seven-foot, eight-foot, nine...
It's a really small area.
Now, we're talking a tiny corner. It's only the building. We keep the landscaping all within the code here and within the code here. And I think just when you get to the practicality of having bays and you start jagging things...
No, again, when you start to build buildings and jog them, I get that. I get that.
This is where I was saying, put the, let me get my glass.
Go ahead. One up, Nazzy.
Existing slab...
We're determining your future. Be part of it.
Existing slab stops about right there. So it would be just 10 foot beyond that. That would get you the 20-foot distance back for this portion of the building.
So we're talking about doing something like this.
Slid it, you're seven or eight feet, you'd have it.
The only concern about that is, on paper, it looks great. But when you're talking about auto body shops, an oil change store, if cars coming in and out, people backing cars up, people moving left and right, and when you start to create this jog, you're going to be worried about people coming out of here, rounding the corner here, a car backing up and not seeing... I think so, but then there's also going to be people walking around the lot looking at cars. And I just think you create a safety issue that's, I mean...
I got you. I understand. Let me ask a further question. How big is this building from here to here? Repeat, remind me.
It's 48 feet.
Forty-eight feet.
150 by 150 is the overall building?
Yeah, 150 is...
Yeah, 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 I get that.
I think it's 90, 98 feet, something like that to the...
Yeah, I don't know where it starts relative to this. Well, the existing building is 96. The addition is 54.
And they're going to give this up too? Well, I don't have a problem with that. I don't know, Jan, how do you feel? We're straw voting again.
You know, I certainly, you know, I tend to agree with Mr. Brown's observations. But when we're talking about...
Such a small area.
Such a small area.
And we're gaining over here.
Considering the fact that, I don't think that there's a...
So you're leaning in favor of the applicant? Carl, you're leaning in favor of the applicant? Jake, you're leaning in, okay. Wilma, where are you leaning? In favor, opposed, or neutral? Where are you feeling about this? Did you understand the conversation we just had?
Yep, I understood that one. And the other, and it's not on this plan that I can see, is the amount of cars, parking spaces in front of the building for cars. And showing the parking spaces behind the building for 50 cars to at least have the lines drawn. But especially in front of the building, I think we should have no, I mean, we...
I appreciate that input, but right now I'm trying to get your opinion on this, on this triangle right here.
That triangle. I thought we had, oh, we had to wait to...
That's why I asked if you followed the conversation we just had.
No, I was...
Okay, so let me, let me refresh you. Everybody kind of clustered around here. I know you were looking for something else to argue over at the same time, but this back, thank you for coming forward. Over here, they're going to require a variance for landscaping. They won't require a variance here because there's no building. So really what it boils down to is a small triangle right here that they're asking for a variance on. They're going to move this, not require a variance. This shaded area here, in fact, except for the dumpster being there. But that could happen by a bad driver. So what we're talking about is, on a straw vote, how do you feel about this small section of the building encroaching seven feet into the setback between two industrial or industrial and a...
Commercial and industrial.
Commercial and, this is commercial and this is industrial. Were it, were it commercial to commercial? It would be 10. Were it industrial to industrial?
It's...
It would be 10.
So if it was either of those, we wouldn't need a variance at all.
So, okay, so it makes, it makes it even more minor to me, but we've taken, everybody else has given their opinion. We're just looking for yours, Wilma, at this point. On this, on this little corner.
Just a little corner that's sitting there and, and that's encroaching on the setback.
Encroaching seven feet into the setback.
Yes, yeah.
If it was, if it was zoned, if it was zoned just like the butter, it would not be an encroachment.
No. No. But that's why when this area was voted on to be a strip commercial back a few years by, by the people, they expected us to follow the setbacks.
What's the area of this 700?
So, so your, your position, your position is you're opposed to it.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I want, that's what I wanted to know.
But you want to know my reasons, Charlie.
And I'm, and, and your reason, we got it. Thank you, thank you, thank you for bringing this up, Forrest, thank you. All right, so, we're moving forward. I just have another question, just because I'm curious, sometimes I don't, I don't, I don't understand everything in the plan. We've been staring at this page three. It's, on page three of this big plan, there's a little area called the construction entrance and wash-off pit. What is that?
That's just a construction entrance. That's only during the construction period, so when trucks and vehicles are leaving the site, it's a gravel surface to remove, to try to get the dirt off.
So, while they're building this, they're actually going to clean the trucks before they go onto a public road or?
Well, well, yeah, but there's a gravel surface there.
Okay.
In the hopes of trying to get mud off the top.
That's what that is, okay.
And the, the operators can get there and knock the dirt off the vehicles before they enter the public, public street.
That was, that was just, I just, sorry, I wasn't familiar, I wasn't real sure what it was, so I wanted to ask. And we've been trying to get to Charlie, so unless somebody else on the board has a pressing question, Charlie?
Thank you.
It's yours.
All right. There are a number of comments that I made that probably are more appropriately addressed directly to Brian and Bill Madden, and I haven't seen the responses yet. He says he has, so I don't know how to...
Would you like to, would you like to hold off and, and...
I think we, I think we need some time to talk about it, because there's some things that we simply say, fine, that's okay, or they make some adjustments.
This list could get shorter or longer?
Yeah, probably, hopefully shorter.
Shorter would be wonderful.
That's the goal.
The, the landscaping, there is a question on that, which I think is appropriate for the board to take up. That would be...
Page?
Fifth page of my letter.
The fifth page of your letter, too.
And at the bottom of the sheet, it says Sheet 9 of 10 Landscape Plan, Item 2.
Sheet 8 and 10?
Eight and 10.
Oh, Sheet 9 and 10 Landscape, I got it, I'm with you. Yep.
If you assume this is a new project, this is more than 5,000 square feet, so it requires an architect, landscape architect to stamp the plan. Technical detail, but you have to make that determination.
Well, we, we will get that stamped by a landscape architect.
Whether we deem it to be a new project or not, you're going to...
Well, the plan you have in your packet was actually prepared by a landscape architect, he just didn't stamp it prior to us having to submit the package.
Cool.
But the plan was prepared by a landscape architect.
If it was up to me, I'd deem it to be a new project anyway, so.
[laughing]
It's not entirely up to me, though.
One down.
But that's good, that, okay. So, while we're talking about Sheet 9 of 10, and we've talked about number 2, do you want to talk about 1, 3, and 4, or is that more appropriate, we discussed it for the time?
Yeah, it, item number 1, it doesn't conform to the buffer against the industrial land to the south, because they're not showing any landscaping back there.
And is that, is that relating back to this previous conversation we had?
Beyond it.
And the piece up above?
No, it's beyond it.
Okay.
The area that would be behind the gravel parking lot, where they supposedly are going to store cars.
Okay.
So, that buffer needs to continue in that direction. Now, I think it's fair that the board should know that not that many years ago, between Wallaca and this building, that was entirely treed.
Yep.
That was taken out. I don't know how much of it behind the building was taken out, but clearly, the buffer zone applies to that section as well as it does to the side lot. It's budding up against industrial land.
Whoever is behind it, yeah?
It's there that meets the 20-foot dimension, you don't have to worry about it.
That's existing, but this is...
But it's hard to tell from the plan what's there and what isn't, because it does not depict what was there previously, and when I went to the drainage calculation, some of the plans that they showed in that showed the old woods lines, and they were used in calculation, so I don't know what's there and what isn't.
And you're hearing this, too?
So, I, I think Brian has a response, but it's essentially, they're already noted on the landscaping plans as trees and shrubs, there's also going to be swale back there.
Okay.
It's, the buffer is, it does continue all the way around.
I, I just, and we'll, we'll keep moving forward, we'll try to keep it brief tonight, because I know you're going to have further discussion.
The kinds of details that he and I need to talk about.
Yeah, 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 but I just, the board's hearing it, too, so.
Right.
Okay, number 3.
In the interest of time, do you think it would be beneficial if, I mean, if we're looking at a continuance anyway, to get to the next date, would it be beneficial to have the straw vote on the variance piece, so we at least know if we need to...
We kind of already did, and I know where we are.
Okay.
I mean, we have one person that's opposed, and everybody else is okay with it.
Okay.
But that's not a, that's a straw vote, so.
So, and that's with the modified?
We're kind of, we're kind of, yeah, we're gonna...
Okay.
You gave and we took.
Okay, perfect. Then I will keep my mouth shut.
You know, in sales, they say, if the guy says yes, stop talking.
Right, exactly. I just want to make sure that, you know, once we accomplish that, and then, and Brian has a vast majority of the answers.
I guess I'd, if I can, I would ask the board to consider what sort of a finding they're going to make, with respect to that, that's all.
To the variance? I'm not sure we're going to find a, make a finding. You, you're, you're referring again to that little triangle.
I'm referring to anything that encroaches in the setback, because of the, the size of the lot does not impact that. It's the location of what they're choosing to do as a addition to the building. Plenty of lot there, so that the lot does not force them into that sort of a configuration.
I got it, and as a straw vote, so far, unless somebody changes their mind, as a straw vote, Wilma takes the position that the building should be adjusted.
Yeah.
The rest of the board has said that in exchange for some other setbacks that aren't going to be, for the consideration of how small it is and consideration...
I think, I think what he's saying is, for, you have to make statutory findings, and so what, what are your findings going to be with respect to the circumstances that, that caused this hardship that we're addressing? Is that...
But are we voting, we're not voting on this in pieces, we're voting on it in its entirety, aren't we?
Except that you need, you need to make a finding with respect to the variance, that's a part of the application, I agree, but your findings have to reflect the statutory requirements for the variance, and I'm just thinking to myself, what can I say that says that the conditions out there, conditions of, on the ground, the size and shape of the lot and so forth, financial hardship notwithstanding, the fact that the statute says you cannot create your own hardship, how do you say that in such a way that meets the statutory requirements, given the fact that, I understand what you're saying about the little bit of land that we're talking about.
Yep.
It's a minor thing, but it's, it's still a variance.
But the topography of the land does match the need, I mean, you're looking at, once you start moving that building forward or anything else, you're going to start getting a downward slope towards a wetland at the bottom of the hill.
That's, that's so immaterial.
But I appreciate the fact you disagree, but I think that there is enough for the board to make a finding that would support a variance in this case. We talked about the soil conditions, we talked about the shapes of the lot, we talked about the, the different topography, and, and I think that when you start sloping down towards a wetland and you run that risk, I think that there's enough for a finding here.
Brian, let's push it.
So, what we would be proposing at the time is to perhaps continue the hearing for a week, give us a chance to sit down with Charlie, go through Charlie's list, talk about what needs to be discussed, and come back, or two weeks, I think, with the 28th, so that I think some of Charlie's concerns can be addressed, because I think that Brian has done an excellent job with his response, but that hasn't, that conversation hasn't happened.
Yeah, if you can, if, I mean, I'm happy with continuing and not addressing Charlie's concern right now, especially if I think there's a hint that we might be able to come back in two weeks and make our job easier, which I think I'm hearing a hint of. So, that said, are you comfortable with that, Charlie? Yeah, okay. So, that said, I think at this point, it would be appropriate for us to hear a motion to continue.
Before you do that, Jim, there are some comments I wrote up, because the planning board actually saw this under their requirement to give you comments within 30 days.
Yep.
I emailed you, and I emailed Ken on this back on the 28th of March.
I did get that, I've got a copy.
There are other comments in the file as well, too.
There are other comments in the file that I haven't seen yet? Let me, let me see what they are. They need to be read into the folder tonight, into the file tonight, I think. You're right, I did see something, now that you mentioned it. So, before we continue or close, let's...
Members of the board, I hate to be incredibly rude, but I have to go get my son.
You can be excused, we can close without you.
The joys of divorce.
Joys?
Yes.
The joys of divorce.
At least I own it, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you very much, and I will see everyone on the 28th.
I have enough down for 20.
In this form, I think, yeah.
I'll take this one. Bye, guys.
Nope.
You must be killing, huh?
Bill Grady, Jim, yeah. No, there was a, there was a, here we go, no, wait a minute, we're not done, we're not, we haven't closed it yet, we got a, a handwritten...
Oh, hold on now, one more thing.
We haven't continued it yet, because it was brought to my attention that this was in the folder, and we want to read it into the folder. There's a letter here that is dated April 25th, 2017, it's handwritten, and it's not signed, and I am opposed to reading something into the folder, into the file that's anonymous. Let me see if I can read this silently for a minute and find the author. I'll make a note that there's been a handwritten letter submitted and stamped received on April 25th. I choose not to read it into the record, because whoever chose to write it chose not to identify themselves, which carries very little weight with me.
Maybe there's something you can...
Do they identify themselves within the letter?
I have another one here dated March 22nd, that's not stamped by the, by anybody, but it's from the Board of Health. It's March 22nd, 2017, regarding your request for comment for the proposed car sales lot by JNJ Holdings, the Wayham Board of Health would request that plans be submitted for the subsurface surge disposal system designed in accordance with the state and local regulations. I think they will do that, they've heard it. Wayham Fire District Water Department, April 4th, 2017, regarding plan review, JNJ Holdings proposed commercial car sales, comments per GAF Engineering, Project France, property will be served. Hang on, let me...
Charlie, can I see that?
Yes.
Please.
Thank you.
But the fire, I believe this is just for our folder, this doesn't need to be read in.
See, that went to Jim.
They're going to have to get this fire department to sign off, correct?
He didn't send it out.
You're going to have to have the fire department sign off, right? There's a letter in here from the Wayham Fire District, but we don't need to read that into the record.
Yes, you do.
And this is the one that Charlie referred to. Board of Appeals, from the planning board, that's a matter of public record, Building Department, I think we're good, I am prepared. This is the letter in question, before we fail to read it.
He has this letter before him, I read this one.
I, I, I've read it, I've read it myself, but as far as reading it into the public record, it's not signed, and...
Someone that's pretty...
I'm saying it on public record right now, if the author is reviewing or present, I'm giving them the opportunity to...
I didn't receive that.
Resubmit or sign or acknowledge, but I'm just not comfortable reading something into the public record that's not even signed and doesn't identify the writer. We'll give Jen a second to read through, give her...
Well, please don't, I was just, don't, don't hold up on my account.
Don't, don't wait for you?
No.
Then that said, I will entertain a motion for a continuance for two weeks.
Before, before you do, do that, you're going through site plan review, special permit as well, in that you look at the architectural...
Correct.
Concepts. One of the things that you can include is the materials and colors.
Materials and colors?
And colors.
And colors, okay. You making that note? Did you hear what he?
Yes, sir.
I'm not sure that we'll request it, but if you're prepared for it, it would make it a lot better.
If I may, it's a, it's going to be a concrete split face and shungel roof, so it's not a metal building, if you would suggest.
Okay.
It's going to be all center block, split face.
But I think we're going to ask for elevations in an architectural, you know, so, that'll probably...
You can just...
Anything else?
None.
Then, then I'm still seeking a motion to continue for two weeks.
Motion to continue a republic hearing for two weeks.
And do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Carl? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? We continue. Thank you for coming in, thank you.
Thank you.
And you and Charlie will get together and, thank you. And I believe you're going to come back up and close this, or finish, take it over from here?
Well, mine, I just scheduled this.
So, we got a, we got a...
Mine's out, mine's out. Oh, a week? You moved the sign.
All right, okay.
For the record.
For the record. Hey, you got to put, put your...
Okay, for the record, I'm back, it is 9:05, wow, 9:02 PM. Okay, we have petition 18-17 CTG Property LLC, the, the Sonic, they requested to withdraw the petition without prejudice. What's your wishes?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor to withdraw, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, so that's gone. If you guys recall, on Minnetab, Mr. Mike, Mike, right?
Oh, the, the old Snow and Jones.
Right. And we have a letter from Charlie in the packet somewhere. He reviewed that, do you guys have it somewhere?
Let's see if I got a copy in my...
I know it's here somewhere, but...
I, I'll look and see if we got something in the...
We could read off his copy.
It's all done, everything's done, right?
Not really.
I moved the sign, I, for the record, my name's Mike Giancollo, owner of 72 Minnetab. I moved the sign, I stretched the spaces, the plan called... I moved the sign, I striped the spaces, the plan called for sixty-one, I striped fifty-four. So I'm asking for a variance for seven spaces. And on that letter, there was also a small area behind the building that was supposed to be loomed and seeded. It was right next to the building, I paved it instead. So I need, I'd like a variance for that as well.
The problem is to get a variance, you need a public hearing, that's the problem.
Do I need a variance for seven spaces?
If you're gonna come back for a variance for the landscaping and the seven split...
Were we under a variance already? What were we voting on to begin with? Let's get this, what file is this?
That was approved before us, the previous board.
Yep.
And then, and then there's a few things he hadn't finished. And last time, if you recall, he came by. I guess we discussed that was okay. You moved the fence on the front, we agreed on that. The sign, you just gotta put it on your property, which you did, I believe.
You did that, I did. You did everything on the, on the list.
Yes.
Except, with the exception that you're short of seven spaces.
Parking spaces. That's correct.
And you paved an area that the plan showed as...
Was supposed to be grassed and seed. It was, it's a, was a grassed area behind the building that I, when I bought it, it was smaller. The engineer showed enlarging it, but there was no irrigation back there. So to, to me, it was just gonna be a good place to grow weeds, and so I paved.
Is it against the building, or is it against the back of the...
It's against the building.
Against the building. So it was just like, between the building and the paved area, there was a grassy area.
Short.
Please.
How big of an area, do you know?
And I'm, I'm, I'm lost on another matter that we're not even talking about tonight, but when you were here before, we talked about an area that was a possible, the curbs, then we said, yeah, don't put the curb stops in. Where the heck was that on the site?
That's where the, near the railroad, in the back.
Thank you.
So this is the area that was back behind the building.
Okay.
That was fifteen feet wide, but I'm not sure how many feet deep, but that's back behind the building. And then these are the curb stops. This is the property line, sorry, this is the property line here. And then this is the pavement that was paved by the previous owner.
So the pavement is the encroachment?
That's correct, there's a pavement on the fence, and that's the encroachment, that's correct.
Okay, and this is the railroad back here?
Why, why you took the grass out of here?
Because there was no irrigation.
You can put some evergreen that will grow?
It's paved now.
It's paved now.
It's all paved now, the utility pole there with an anchor on it. The idea was to loom some and seat that. But by not doing that, what they did was they put a handicap space between here and here. There's a handicap space out in front of it. And because they're still using the parking that encroaches, it moves the spaces over and the striping moved over to give room enough to get by, but that handicap space sticks out into this area.
So being paved is actually a better situation?
Well, I think it could have been loomed and seeded.
Could have been loomed, yeah.
Of course it could have been, but what would I have wrong with no irrigation or with growing weeds? It, it, it doesn't matter if it's paved or not, it's, it's a minor area, but the thing I have to do is putting that handicap space out in front of it.
Is it still there?
Yeah.
We'll go way back to the Brandy Hill thing about the island. You're gonna have a little small area like that. We just talked about that with the Brandy Hill signs down the bottom having an island, and there's snowplow and everything, you got the same issue right there.
But this plan doesn't show a handicap spot there?
No, it doesn't.
That's the approved plan.
This plan is not like what's out there.
This is it, this is the pole, is they, they use it as a handicap, so push this. I have no problem with that.
You've seen it?
Yeah.
You have no problem?
I used to hide back there. That it's supposed to push the handicap space into between the aisle, which is supposed to be open for travel and transport.
Is that last week?
Getaway spot?
These bumpers in here, if you look at the special permit...
They were supposed to put bumpers, and we told them they don't have to, yep.
Because at the time, the Board of Appeals felt it important not to say that they were granting any approval for anything that went beyond the boundary line.
Right.
Those were put in there purposely so that there wouldn't be a continuous encroachment off into the area where the pavement goes today. That's why they were suggested, and those haven't been put in. But there's a change, like it's only three spaces instead of four. There's a handicap space over here, and some other things, which are minor, but...
Mike, let me ask you something. In the back with the, with the concrete stops, can you like post on rail fence?
Well, there's a fence back here already.
There's, there's already a chain link fence back there.
There's a chain link?
There is a chain link. What is it?
It's right, it's here.
It's over the lot line, but quite a bit. Comes into it right at, right at the lot, right here.
But it's encroaching.
Right, remember, I'm twenty-five feet above, it's, it's railroad property. I'm twenty-five feet above the railroad. If they come and tell me to hit the road, then, then I'll move, you know? But I think that's my risk.
I don't think they're gonna do that, but my point was that I don't think the original Board of Appeals' special permit suggested that it was okay to keep the space beyond the lot.
So we wanna, we wanna be recorded, that we're not, we're not giving him permission to use, or to use the encroachment, we're just not...
I don't think he is using it.
Yeah, he is.
No, I'm using it.
It's paved.
Yeah, it's already, it's already paved, fenced, it's, it's done, you know? That was done by the previous owner.
And getting a cross-easement from a railroad would only take about thirty years.
Yeah, but this, the point is, whether they use it or not, the point is there's a special permit, and we're supposed to enforce it, that's the bottom line. So we gotta decide if it's a minor modification or a major, whether he encroach or doesn't. The whole, the whole fact is this plan he was supposed to do.
He didn't.
He didn't. Whatever we could waive, we will if the board feels appropriate, and if the board doesn't, whatever. So we, we're just gonna go item by item and decide which one's appropriate to waive and consider a minor. So we look at Charlie's list and go one by one and decide, and let the whole board vote on it.
Okay.
Okay, that makes sense?
I'm with that, yep.
So last time you waived, we did the curb stops in defense.
Right, last time we did agree that there's no curb stops.
Yeah.
We agreed on this, but...
That's a done, that's done, except for Wilma.
So, so let's go one by, one item after one, let's go over the first one.
So the items that here are marked off, is that, who marked them off? Is that things that we already agreed on, what, we got some circled?
They've been done. Okay.
Which letter is that?
So this is your most recent letter. So the two items there are...
A and B.
...the plan, and, and I need your approval.
Everything else was approved earlier, or...
Let me, let, let's go back. The wheel stops, we did agree last time.
Yep.
It's okay not to have them, right? The striping of the parking lot, he said he'll do it, he has a machine, he did. However, he came out short seven spaces.
Correct.
So he wants a waiver on that. So this is one issue we have to address. The pavement out on the utility pole has not been so cut and replaced by loom. Did last time we agreed that you could pave it?
It was never brought up last time.
It's not about, he just did it.
All right, that's on the board, we're gonna have to decide on that. Did you wanna show, son?
I was just gonna show you, so you'll know where the parking spaces are, because if you wanna see what took place. There are four spaces here.
Yeah.
There are three here, or a call for four. There are two here, or a call for three. You had this one, then there's thirty-five across here, two here, and one handicap spot over here.
If I may ask, why, why so many parking lots? Why there's so many parking spaces? Does it call for it? I mean, I drive by all the time, there's, there's only three cars.
It's the employees, right?
Right, that's what the permit is, yeah.
It's not a retail gift thing, you know?
You have a shortage of parking?
It's what was shown on the approved plan on the special permit. So you've asked me to take a look, see if it comply with the permit?
No. And this is how it doesn't comply, yeah.
I agree.
And so we have to decide if this is major or minor, or significant.
The edging around the sign appears to be right on the lot line, but it's no encroachment anymore, so that's fine. This area over here with the stormwater and everything, there was an issue with some settlement around here, that's been taken care of.
The grass been germinated most areas, like you say, right?
Yeah, the grass is pretty good shape.
It's loomed and seeded. When I was there back on June fifth, some of it was still coming up, but it's in pretty good shape. It's water, but it's good shape.
So the, we did agree on the curbs before, so he could take them out. So the only thing we discussed, we, we have to agree on tonight, the seven spaces. He needs a waiver on seven spaces, and that thing that he...
The pavement in place of the grass.
Now let me ask you, son. Putting the parking behind it, can, can you eliminate that parking behind it? Because I don't think you're gonna have twenty-four feet in between the parking spaces.
So that's a handicap spot that I put there?
They probably will, because by moving the parking spaces out to this pavement line...
They have the twenty-four feet?
They pushed it further to the property line. Right, what I'm saying, so he does have twenty-four feet in between.
He has twenty-four feet, but not all of it is his, that's the point.
But, so, but if we agree that he doesn't need the seven, oh, he can change that handicap to some other location.
Right.
Right?
Yeah.
All right, all right, yeah.
And eliminate that sitting out there.
Right. Can I speak?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, I, I put the handicap space there. I only need one per bay, or, or per unit.
Right.
This is a sixty-five hundred square foot unit, so it's a bigger unit. So I have one handicap space out front for this unit. But if you look at my picture, there's a handicap ramp outside of the back. So my thinking was, maybe there's a handicapped employee that's gonna work there. He's gonna park in the back, or she, and then if a handicapped customer comes in, there's a handicap space out front.
So that's an extra parking lot, so that's an extra handicap.
It's an extra. So if you want it to go away, I can make it go away, but I just put it there thinking it was a good idea.
I get you.
You could, you could put it right next door, because so it's still within reasonable distance to the human.
Mike, can, if, if I may, can you look here?
Can you come up, come up? Moving it to the left side?
Yeah. Can you just eliminate it in the parking, just put it here, is that all right?
We're talking about the elimination of some spaces anyway. Makes sense if you want the handicap space, put it over here, rather than have it...
Stick out in the park.
But is that where it drops off?
So if you're, when you make a handicap space like that, you're supposed to pass, uh, crosshatch behind the parking space and around it, right? So if I, if I move it over, I guess I can crosshatch.
It would be like...
It'd be closer, so far.
You can, you can move it one space over and, and everybody will be happy. And in front of the pole, you can...
And, and then he doesn't have to do the seven. I don't think he needs the sixty-something.
No.
I don't think the seven spot issue is a big deal.
Yeah. So we can waive it?
Right, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
The only other thing was, I had written in there, there was a condition nineteen on the original special permit, that if there are substantial changes to the site plan, that they need to give an updated site...
So we have to decide if this is substantial or non-substantial?
All right, we'll let the board decide.
I think it's splitting hairs on all of it.
Okay. And, and earlier, Carl, you made a comment that you drive through there on, on a regular basis. That new handicap, that extra handicap spot?
There's no business, there's no one there, there's employees for the, the ambulance company.
Yeah, I get it.
There's nothing going on there.
So it's not, it's, so it's almost moot.
Thank you. That's pretty much my feeling. I mean, it's not a retail operation.
We didn't require, we just, we just wrote it because that's how many spots.
We didn't put those conditions, that was what was applied for it.
That was what it is.
That's why it's that way.
I, I get, my only, my only thought, I hate to make the guy go put black tile over white lines and draw new white lines, but we kind of agreed that he'd do that, and I think maybe we'll keep him doing that. And my only reason for saying that is because we're enforcing the prior board's decision. We, we let him get rid of those curb stops. And the prior board wanted to make the point that this board didn't condone or enable the encroachment. So by moving the handicap spot, we're holding him, we're holding his feet to the letter of the law on the setback from his own land, not from the paved area, from his own land. So I, again, like I said, I hate to make a person paint black paint over white paint and repaint another spot, but I think that's appropriate regardless of the lack of need for it, and that it is extra, just that we're reinforcing a prior board's decision. Well, you know, they did, they, they had a problem with, they made him put curb stops here, and we, we enabled him to not, so...
Right, but it doesn't mean we're giving him the right...
We're not giving him the right to park there, I get it, I get it, but if that handicap spot is there and you measure, if you start measuring from the pavement instead of from the property line, um...
I would rather get rid of the handicap.
Get rid of it, I'll just get rid of it.
Legally, you don't have the twenty-four feet.
Exactly, that's my point, that's my point.
He put, he could put it here next door.
I hate to, yeah.
All right, so we have, we gotta, so we have to give him a waiver for the seven spaces. We did already agree on the curb. Do you want, and we gotta ask the board to get a vote, to get a waiver for a new site plan, because in the conditions number nineteen or nine, nineteen, he's supposed to draft a new plan if there's any modifications, so the board has to decide if we're gonna do the, if we're gonna give a...
So we're gonna make a motion to waive the condition of a new site plan. We're gonna waive the seven spots, and we're gonna accept the paved area under the condition that he move the handicap spot over one space.
Does that make sense, anything else we missing?
So moved, so moved.
All right, do I have a second for Jim's motion?
And I make a motion to close this hearing.
We have to vote on one at a time, though.
It's a, it's a minor modification, so...
It's nine twenty.
Yeah, okay, it's two seconds, just vote. So he, he makes a motion, you second. Is everyone, okay, everyone in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed, okay, four, four one zero.
I know, again, will you take care of that?
Sure.
Okay. All right, so it passes. So now we, we need a motion to...
What? To adjourn.
To adjourn?
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn, I think, maybe that one up there.
I make a motion that Mike leave the building, no.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so what am I doing? I'm, I'm wiping out that handicap spot, is that it?
Yeah, move it to the right.
Move it over one space, everything else is good.
I'm not coming back.
Unless you want to. This is more fun, this is more fun than you can enjoy.
We sign it?
Bob, we're, we're done with the, we're done with the cameras and the vocal...